I'd like to call over the Clive City Council meeting for August the 10th. Will the clerk please call rule?
Mayor Edwards.
Here. Council members Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Michael Anani.
Here.
You'd all join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes. Take a motion to approve.
Move for a second.
Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The votes nay, the agenda is approved. The next item that we have is citizen presentation. This gives a citizen the opportunity to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And while Pete checks to see if there's anyone online, let me remind everyone of our operating principles. We sport the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times remote and model principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting our business, we expect everyone to follow those principles. So Pete, do we have anyone online?
For those who'd like to get our attention here in the chamber, you can use the raise hand function on your Zoom screen bottom, you'll see a set of emojis. If you click the reactions emoji, a separate menu will pop up and you can choose raise hand. Your honor, I do not see hands going up.
And anyone here in the council chambers? Seeing none, we'll move to consent.
Move resolution. Second.
Motion second on the consent items, further discussion. Seeing none, will the council please vote and will the clerk please post that vote?
Aye.
And that passes five zero. First, we have a presentation of a new HR specialist, Liz.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm really pleased to introduce you to Mela Nissick. She is going to be completing our administrative services team. Mela is our new HR specialist and she's going to actually start in August 21st. So Mela has a master's in business administration degree and it has, she has an emphasis on human resources, 15 years of experience and comes from Homeland Security, so, and the DOT before that. So 15 years of experience as their HR specialist. This is Mela.
Mela, welcome. Would you like to make a statement?
I'm really excited to join and hopefully I'll get to meet everyone. If not, I hope that they hear about me and come and see me and say hello.
Very good, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
All right, the first action item we have is third consideration of ordinance. And Amanda.
Evening, mayor, council. Tonight, we have before us the third and hopefully final consideration for the R1 to C4 rezoning of the properties located at Emerald Isle Drive and 156th Street. Again, for reference, the actual rezoning is the north half of the properties that are shown in the development agreement. The south half of the properties were already zoned C4 back in 2016. So since our last meeting, staff has continued to work with the developer and have conversations with the adjacent landowners that have raised concerns about the car wash use that's proposed. And so what you find in the amended and revised, well revised zoning change and development agreement are restrictions on some land uses. Those include automotive repair and automotive wash on lot one, but does allow for the automotive wash on lots two or three. Domesticated animal boarding and kennels is consistent with the restrictions in 2016 that were placed with the come and go property owner at that time, so just carrying that one forward. And then also, some of the requested ones to be added were a laundromat, laundrette, or dry cleaning, retail stores that have a primary product line of tobacco, marijuana, or liquor, pawnbrokers, and delayed deposit services, and self-storage or mini-storage. Of course, any use not allowed in our underlying C4 zoning would also not be permitted by the zoning ordinance. Also in the agreement, there is additional language in there. It requires our typical C4 60% brickstone masonry type exterior. There are site lighting standards that are included. There are references to noise control requirements. And then also, the addition of an enhanced parking setback zone that will be 15 feet located along the shared boundary of lot one and two. And the intent of that is to buffer more the vacuums and noise generation, potential noise generation that had concerns raised from the car wash use itself. So that 15-foot zone would be enough space to get about a two-foot berm and basically replicate what you see as our typical parking lot frontage buffering. So it'd be very similar there. That 15-foot would also allow enough space for some of the required site trees to go in that location in addition to some formal grasses, shrubs, and try to get some more of the evergreen type materials without requiring evergreen trees that we know unfortunately are having a hard time surviving in Iowa right now. And then, of course, there is the requirement in there for the 50-foot landscape buffer along the north edge that's required in the underlying zoning. There's also details in there for the construction obligations of Emerald Isle Drive improvement. This is the more significant change from the previous meetings. That is now that the developer of these lots will have the construction obligation. Initially, staff had proposed that the city would construct it and that they would then reimburse the city for their obligation, which is going to be approximately half of the cost. But through discussions here, we've kind of pivoted on that. And now the developer will have the improvements designed and constructed. And the city will pay back the portion that is not their obligation to them, either as the properties on the north redevelop and we are able to collect that obligation from those properties, or no later than five years from the date of acceptance of the public improvements. We're also requiring that prior to any certificates of occupancy be issued here, we're going to get approximately here completely done on the road and then just past the Reiner's driveway done as well. But it does allow sometime 90 days to finish up the work kind of in the middle portion. It will be one construction project, but that just accommodates your kind of typical staging and phasing that you have with a road construction like this. With that, we do have some additional concerns that have been raised from the Emerald Isle Land LLC regarding the petitions and process and consents that were received. I know that, I believe that had been forwarded to the council prior to the meeting. So staff does believe that our process and everything has followed our ordinance and the state code. But we do have some individuals here tonight for that. And then additionally, Emerald Isle Land did provide their own traffic analysis. I don't know who completed it or if it was a traffic engineer involved, but they did send this along for consideration as well late this afternoon. So it just shows the routing largely coming into the site with vehicles largely exiting out toward Northwest 156th Street and splitting between heading south and north. So with that, I know we do have members of the public present here today. If you guys would like to take any comments or questions, or then, of course, I will entertain any questions you guys have for me.
Any questions for Amanda, Michael?
Yeah, on top of this traffic guide requested to see the noise.
Oh, yes. Sorry about that. So here we have the noise study, sound overlay. So what we have here, this green stops measuring at 50 decibels. That's the same level in the city ordinance which we no longer regulate below. And that is approximately a standard builder-grade dishwasher running would be about a 50 decibel.
Thank you.
Other questions for Amanda Ted?
Amanda, we added in within the agreement, the specifics on noise and lighting and things of that nature, the buffering. So we have all the specifics in there now. Are there any variations from that, from our normal standards?
So our lighting standards are pretty outdated. Staff's been working on that at this point. We don't have a formally adopted updated policy for the LED lights. We do have some standards we've been recommending that people take and use. And for a large part, most of our developers have opted to meet most of those recommendations from staff. This is, in some of those standards, a little more restrictive. For instance, I reduced the glare rating maximum from a three to a two in recognition of the adjacency to the residential uses. But it does still allow for like the typical 4,000 Kelvin commercial lighting that we see and would be very similar to what is existing on new developments over there for Iowa Trust and Savings, Quick Star, it would be similar to their lighting plan. Not, still not quite as bright as Quick Star, but similar kind of standards. And then also, quite similar to what was approved on their other car wash location for the whole Burger King.
Is it basically the same as our typical buffer or did we add more in there?
Yep, so this buffer here, the 50-foot, will be the typical. This little enhanced landscape zone was the response to the other buffering request.
Okay. So you're comfortable with all of that, that we have the requirements in there to make sure that the lighting, the noise, the buffering is all sufficient for the soon-to-be nearby residents that would be going north of there, as well as the existing one that will be going in next year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amanda? Again, just to remind everyone where we are at this point. We had a public hearing earlier. We had a second consideration where we also invited comments from public and others. And so here, we're at the third consideration. And so here this evening, we'd invite anyone to approach us with something new and we'd like to limit comment to three minutes if we could, so Ryan?
My name's Dale, not Bill. Dale Reiner, 15441 Emerald Isle Drive. From what she just said is I got five years to live in my house before you're going to assess me for, I have to pay for the paving. That's what she just got done saying.
Well, let's, Amanda, do you want to clarify that, please?
Yes, that five-year timeframe was to allow for the city to incorporate the payment back into the CIP and budget process. That would not then be a special assessment on to the properties.
Until it were redeveloped.
Yes, at the time it redeveloped, we would attempt to recapture the obligation associated with that property, which is our typical practice.
The next, next question I got is where's the stormwater going? It's off of this car wash and all that, where is it all going?
Amanda?
So the full stormwater management plan would come along with the site plan process. But the detention, water quality, volume, channel protection, recharge requirements will all be met on site. Ultimately, the detention will have to discharge into a storm sewer system that will be constructed as part of the Emerald Isle Drive improvements. Likely that is ultimately going to come out at the regional detention basin that is northeast, a little bit of here, next to Stonegate Park.
Okay. Do you know where, do you know where the water goes now? It grows across private property. The stormwater goes across private property into a private storm sewer. I was just curious, what, what, where's that going to, what's that going to do? Where are you going to take this storm, this new storm too?
So the release rates are required to not be any higher than they were in the pre-development condition. So you, there will still be drainage over private property that happens in any development. But it will not be larger in the volume or speed of it coming out than what it is today. That's what the onsite detention will hold it and then allow it to slowly release at the current or lower actually, most likely, since we use the pre-development query condition for that analysis.
I understand that you're saying that it's not going to be any more water. It's just, it's not going to be, but what we get now is maybe a day of water runoff. Now with all this and retention ponds, we're going to have several days of water runoff, running down the parking.
Oh, well, it will be ultimately picked up in a storm sewer pipe.
Ultimate, but what do we do until then?
That storm sewer will be constructed with the road improvement, which is required prior to the business's opening.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, John.
Do we have someone else who has something new to add to the discussion?
Good evening, council. Ben Bruner with the Dickinson Firm, 699 Walnut Street in Des Moines. Here on behalf again of Iowa Trust and Savings Bank, I'll keep this short. As noted in previous council meetings, the bank obviously has some continuing operational concerns as it relates to the car wash. We thank city staff again for their diligent efforts in trying to mitigate these effects to both the bank operations and the adjacent property owner and developer to the north. Ultimately, though, we feel as though these fundamental issues cannot be fully mitigated and addressed unless the car wash operation is shifted east to the eastern lot and reoriented to push the vacuums again facing east. I think this alternative is feasible from what I hear, but ultimately not preferred by the applicant. And thus, we're requesting that this proposed rezoning be denied. And pursuant to the city plan, or the comprehensive plan of the city, we feel as though the council is compelled to do so. So the Clives Comprehensive Plan clearly requires the city to utilize, and I'm quoting this from the plan, "A holistic planning approach such that each piece is supportive of and enhances the overall value of the neighborhood." And that's page 39 of the comprehensive plan. That basically sets out certain guiding principles as it relates to land use decisions. So this, this is a rare instance where we have every adjacent property owner, both the current uses and the proposed future development, objecting to this use. And I believe we have a number of council members that have gone on record at previous meetings stating that this is not their preference or desire to have a car wash here. So we feel that ultimately, that's the evidentiary record to show that this is not supportive of the neighborhood and does not enhance the value of the neighborhood as required by the city comprehensive plan. And then I just wanted to touch quickly on, so the C4 zoning classification and the specific use of the car wash as permitted therein. It's not legally established as an absolute right certainly of the applicant. Any position otherwise, I think, runs against the Iowa Home Rule, the zoning enabling acts of the state, Clive City Code, and ultimately the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan incorporates a land use plan that merely speaks to a proposed commercial retail services for this property and does not expressly require or prefer the C4 zoning classification. It's our opinion, again, by the way of this specific process, that the governing comprehensive plan, which is requiring the council and the decision makers to ultimately ensure that the proposed use is supportive of and enhances the overall value of the neighborhood, which again, with the objections that are of record from all neighboring property owners, the statements that are of record, we think that clearly does not follow those guidelines. So there's certainly a time and a place for this property to be rezoned commercial. And there's a use that would certainly dictate that. We don't feel that this is the time or the use to ultimately establish this rezoning. Thank you as always for your time and attention. Thank you to city staff for obviously working with us to address the primary concerns.
Any questions for Ben?
Yes, Michael. You had mentioned at the beginning of your comments that you had some operational concerns and none that could be addressed to your satisfaction, but I did not hear what they were.
So it's the continuing noise and light concerns. Again, we feel as though these are two undeveloped properties. It's tough to get a true read on exactly how this will function in reality when both operations are in place. We, we take that, the sound study, we take the traffic study. We, again, appreciate the enhanced landscaping buffer. In reality, just how this will truly play out, we have, we have great concerns. And I think ultimately, our, our push is to move everything east to completely alleviate those concerns.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ben. Do we have anyone else with something new to present?
Good evening, Kyle Kaidner of Sullivan Ward, 6601 West Town Parkway, here on behalf of Emerald Isle Land. And we piggyback on, on what Iowa Trust has said. And we still have our same concerns, but our new, the new item we want to bring to your attention is that we, we're all the opinion that the plan development, the car wash specifically, is not really consistent with the spirit of the Clive zoning regulations and its guiding principles as stated in the comprehensive plan. You know, this is zoned as a C4 planned shopping center. And your zoning regulations say that the purpose of the planned shopping center district is to provide land for the orderly and logical development of a complete and intensive shopping center with a broad range of retail and permitted office use, which exhibits a high quality of architectural and design quality. The development will incorporate high-quality materials and unique architectural designs and substantial plantings of trees, shrubs, and other plant materials. What's before you today is, is a car wash and then on three lots with the car wash in the middle. No other plan. That, that just, there's, you know, with all due respect to, to the developers, I don't think they've met the criteria of, of a, of a complete and intensive, logical development of a complete and intensive shopping center. And then as far as the guiding principles, when, when I look at your comprehensive plan, the first three guiding principles are referred to the residents of Clive. And, and all of the residents around this development have expressed their, not, not all, nearly all of the residents around the, around this development have expressed their concern for and, and opposition of this car wash going in. So I guess we would go a step further than Iowa State Bank. We're all for rezoning to C4, but, but we would like the zoning and development agreement to not only prohibit the car wash on lot one, but to also prohibit it on lots two and three. Questions for me?
Any questions?
Yeah, question. So councilor, are you saying that if we don't have all three lots identified for what they're going to be, that we can't rezone it? Is that what, what you're saying? I'm just.
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying is that when you're supposed to look at rezoning, according to these guidelines, you're supposed to, there's supposed to be a comprehensive plan. And, and I don't see anything beyond, beyond the car wash. I don't see any planning beyond that. And that's what I'm trying to get at.
To that argument, wouldn't we then halt the bank's progress and their construction? Because we don't have the whole plan for that entire area. So maybe we should hold up the bank from being finished until we have that whole neighborhood?
I think the difference is, the bank was already C4. And, and, and so they came before. So the applicant is here to ask for rezoning of those four, of those five lots. I think that's the distinction that we're making here.
The only, the problem I have with that is that I fully expect staff to follow this, this, these guidelines when it comes to, we haven't seen their design yet. And that's a whole nother.
Sure.
Game here, right? We're rezoning today. But once that design comes, or I'm going to look for the unique stone roof. All that, it's not going to be a tube going in there, right? That won't happen.
Sure.
And so they're going to have to follow all those standards. Seen that yet, because we got to rezone it before they design it.
Sure.
You know, I'm with you, but I'm going to hold them to those standards, that's for sure.
Sure.
Other questions? Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Anyone else with something new to say?
Good evening, I'm Rich Ayers, Ayers Design Group. I'm the architect for the Town Home Project. At the last meeting, I brought up a little bit of a concern of the quantity of traffic that will be generated on Emerald Isle. So I'm a kind of graphic oriented. So I'm providing a graphical representation based on, their performer was saying they have 300 cars a day, roughly speaking, of car washes. And then logically, majority of those car washes would be in the morning, noon time, and evening. So I weighted that to be 70% in those six-hour timeframe. That timeframe then, figuring that we have them coming from the east, coming from the west, and coming down from the north. Any of the traffic that is south would be generally the same as coming from the west. That, taking the 70%, which is 210 cars, dividing it by six hours is 35 cars an hour are going to that. Then further dividing that because of traffic patterns, I have 12 cars coming from each of the three directions. This is just to try to quantify the number. And based on that, you have coming from the east, which could do a right turn into the site and, you know, avoid Emerald Isle to speak of. Go around is what you see in red on the graphic. Go through that. I'm saying that would be 12 cars with four cars exiting via 156th Street to go back east. In the future, the intersection there will be closed to a right-in, right-out. Then going over to the west side, you have eastbound traffic that is turning left onto 156th Street, then turning east onto Emerald Isle and then into the car wash, then reversing path by turning left against traffic of 156th Street, four-lane road, going up to Hickman and going west. The northbound lane is a similar type of situation. What that is doing is placing 56 cars or 56 movements on the Emerald Isle intersection with the private, both the bank and the Town Home Development. That's one every minute. Part of that then is you have 12 cars. The other significant portion is you have 12 cars turning left at the interchange, which will never be signalized and again, has to get across. This could potentially stack up to a point where you could not get into the bank or people may cut through the Town Home Development to get farther away from the intersection.
You're beyond three minutes, could you sum up?
Okay, so basically what that is, is a graphical representation of the traffic impact of washing a car every five minutes.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you.
Anyone else here this evening with something new?
Aaron Coler, 1705 South 42nd Street, Best Des Moines. What I have a new is, we have a withdrawal support from LaFune and Company. They have withdrawing their support for the car wash and C4 zoning. And I have something in writing from them.
I'm sorry, who's that from?
LaFune and Company.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, and I don't know if we might have legal councilor Doug respond to that?
Yeah, Doug, do you want to just hit on what this, or Amanda, what this is related to? This is just for the consent petition.
I'll give a crack and we'll see if Doug can re-explain for me. So what we have here is the consent petitions that are required to initiate the rezoning. And we have had a situation a few years ago that we did get legal opinion on. We had a property owner consent and then also submit a petition against. But at that point, the consent is done, council is received and filed. The only thing that person is consenting to is starting the rezoning process, not saying that they necessarily support the land uses that are underlying or the zoning that's requested, just that they're giving their consent for that process to proceed. Our ordinance requires 50.1% of the property within 310 feet to be represented by that. We have exceeded that, whether you calculate them individual lots for the five, or as one rezoning area. So this really, at this point, it would be saying they're not supportive. So this really, at, at this point, it would be saying they're not supportive of the uses anymore, but we've established that this process has already started several months ago. So it's, that part's done. That book is closed. We're on the next chapter is really what we see here today.
And so basically you're saying that the change of heart is moot at this point?
Yes.
As far as this is, okay.
You know, but rethink, we brought this Mr. LaFune and Company, withdraw their support prior to third reading.
And that can be considered by the council, but.
Yes, yes, that's why you want to bring your attention. Also, home lot number one and two, which is on the west end, we should have a higher wording power compared to lot number five, which is on the east end. Each legal parcel owner requested for the petition. And so, so we have a higher percentage on the west end home compared to the east end home. And we have provided that our argument to the city this afternoon.
So the basis of that is if we look at each of the five lots individually and you work out the percentages, different property owners could have a higher percent of the land area than three, 10 feet if it's considered on a lot by lot basis, which staff did confirm before we received and filed the petitions. So even with that, we have exceeded 50%. I have here the rezoning as a whole, and then a spreadsheet for each of the lots individually. The lowest percentage we did get was on the westernmost lot, and it was 50.68% of the consents. So we've still exceeded the 50.1 requirement.
Very good. Again, council will consider all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with anything new? Rebuttal, I guess.
No, Your Honor. Joel Templeman, Little Somali Law Firm, 505 Fifth Avenue, Suite 1005 Des Moines, here on behalf of the applicant. Just wanted to take a minute and thank the council and staff for all the time you spent on this issue. We have representatives here again tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions you have for us.
Any questions? Looks like we don't.
Great. Thank you.
What we're asked to do is the third consideration.
I just want to clarify, Your Honor, and for everyone, that the third consideration ordinance does incorporate by reference the zoning development agreement. So all of the changes in the agreement that you heard implemented in that agreement are part of your ordinance. So just so you know, it's one action and your third reading, which will also adopt that agreement and all those changes that the applicant has, has incorporated in their process. Does that make sense?
Michael?
And Doug, am I right that my earlier comments, it's, this just resolves? The design and such is still coming in front of us, right?
Yes, as is the rezoning process, what then happens is a series of development requests related to the preliminary plat, which will start laying out the overall intent of the project that will be generally consistent with the development plan that you have seen, which from staff's perspective, although we don't have the individual buildings, because those users are not defined, the important aspects around the utility provisions to each of the properties, the access in terms of the shared access management arrangements, the buffering, the stormwater management, those features have all been considered as part of the development plan. And again, I would see that the preliminary plat would be consistent with, with the development plan. And then as we deal with each individual site plan as they come in, we'll need to meet the expectations of both the development agreement, the preliminary plat as ultimately approved by the council.
So that's what makes you start getting into some of the exterior look of the building, whether it's.
Specific tree types, specific materials on buildings, specific colors, et cetera, are all part of the individual site plan processes.
And I think with my comment, I appreciate that, that extinction, because I think that makes a difference. And I think, you know, my opinion would be, I don't, I would not care for a design that showed me a see-through tube on Hickman.
So is there some action?
Yes, there is in that.
Thank you.
What I meant to say was that I'd move ordinance number 1136 be considered for the third time, place upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion?
Can I just make a quick comment?
Please do too.
So this has been a difficult topic that we've, we've all grappled with, and hopefully we've been very thoughtful in how we've handled this. You know, I think a, a number of us have said this is, this is not necessarily our preferred option. But with, with the way our comp plan is set up and you know, the, the changes that the applicant has made to accommodate our requirements, the, the funding of the road, things of that nature. From my perspective, from what I've been told, we don't have a whole lot of options here for, as a council. So, um, so that's why I will be supporting this. It's, it's again, not my preferred solution, but I feel that the applicant has, has met all the requirements that we have put in front of them. So.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Seeing none with the council, please vote. And clerk, please post the vote for votes affirmatively required in order to pass.
Aye.
That passes by a vote of four to zero. Thank you all for your work and staff for your work as well. Well, next move into a public hearing on a zoning ordinance regarding rear yard exceptions. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, again.
Did we publish the public, public notice, by the way?
Yes, Your Honor, that was published in the Des Moines Register on July 26, 2023.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you. Uh, yes. So tonight we're bringing forward before you, um, the actual start of the process for amending the ordinance. Um, as we had discussed at a couple of previous meetings to get additional flexibility for single family property owners to add additions, cover decks, some of those enhanced amenities that we've seen a big uptick in particularly since 2020. That will make it easier for a lot of our residents to now make these improvements without having to go through the variance process through board of adjustment. Planning and zoning did look at this at their meeting last week, and they didn't really have any concerns about the content of the change. The discussion really all focused around the wording of it, and they felt that that could be made more clear, a little more plain language. Um, so that is the only change staff has made. We broke one kind of complicated sentence into two sentences, um, that you see before you. But this ordinance will just allow for detached, single family dwelling units to be permitted up to 20 feet of the dwelling to be constructed to a 25 foot rear yard setback are typical today for most developments is a 35 foot rear yard setback. This will allow again, just a 20 foot portion to be at that. So still some mitigation on really intensifying the use in that rear yard space. And then the 20 feet is measured linearly along the plane of the dwelling's rear facade, just for clarity. With that, staff has not received any public comments on this, and Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously vote for approval with the revised language.
Questions for Amanda?
Any concerns with the easements that sometimes, you know, utility easements and things like that there? I just want to make sure we're not, we're not setting ourselves up for a problem down the road.
So our typical easement width that we see really for the most part in those areas is between five and 10 feet. So at the 25 foot, we're still leaving at least that 10 feet there. Um, in the few circumstances where there might be a larger drainage easement or detention or something, those property owners would have those restrictions regardless of this change. So they wouldn't be able to place structures or other development in that area without going through the First Amendment process, which would give staff and the council the opportunity to evaluate specifically what's requested and if it would be harmful to that area.
Thank you. Good.
I'll move close public hearing.
I do have a question.
Motion second, close public hearing, further discussion. Susan?
Thank you. Have we had any requests for variance that would exceed what this is enabling in the past?
We have. Um, our requests for variances have ranged from a few inches up to, I think it's around 17 or 18 feet, which is a pretty extreme request for a variance. Uh, so this is really tempering that to what we feel will address about 80% of the requests we're getting that staff felt was a reasonable use of that backspace and that is more comparable to what um, other, other property owners might have if they had a little bit deeper of a yard.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions from council members? Is there anyone in the chamber to rest the council on this matter? Being none with the council, please vote on closing public hearing.
Aye.
And will clerk, please post that vote. And the public hearing is closed by a vote of five to zero.
Move that ordinance number 1140, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
I got.
Motion second on the first reading of the ordinance, further discussion. Being none with the council, please vote. And, and will clerk, please post that vote. And the first reading passes by a vote of five to zero. Next up, we have a public hearing on SQR. Uh, while Pete approaches, did we publish the appropriate public notice?
A public hearing notice was published in the Des Moines Register on July 21st, 2023.
Thank you. Pete?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm happy to come before the council with good news for residents of Clive. We're doing our second year of Soil Quality Restoration Cost Share Program. You'll remember last year was extremely popular and was the product of really great partnerships with our private provider, our contractor last year, but also with Metro Waste and with Pope County. We're looking now to operationalize this. So as a staff, we can do much of this lifting with a reasonable amount of effort that doesn't overwhelm all of our other responsibilities, and we're on a path to getting that done. Tonight's an important step toward that. Uh, we're here to present, uh, a recommendation to award a contract to A Plus Lawn and Landscape. They were the low bidder. It was earlier this month that we opened bids and we had quite a range. You can see that in the packet. Low bid ended up coming in at 11 cents a square foot, which was only a penny better than the second place bid at 12 cents a square foot. The high bid was at 25. Last year, we were at 21 cents a square foot, and we were also utilizing a grant from the state of Iowa to meet the city's half of that cost share obligation. Reason for the lower prices this year are, one, we've made overseeding an option that residents can choose, but they choose, but they'll have to pay for that all themselves. And then two, we had a much more competitive bidding landscape this year, I think, as more of the private companies have recognized the opportunity. They've said they want to get into this work. They've got the machinery to do it. They've got the infrastructure back in the back office to handle all the inquiries that are coming in. I've really been impressed with what I've seen from A plus at this point, and, uh, I feel that they're going to be a good part for us moving forward. We're also improving the ways that we do our work here as staff. I want to compliment my colleague, Julia McGuire and Corey Phillips, who have come up with a system so that we can accurately get this treatable area on each of the participating lots without me having to go out and actually go and spot check all of them. That's a major time saving. And, uh, we're still feeling very good and accurate about that number. And it's important that we get that right because that's what drives the cost share number. That's the number we're putting on our agreement and telling the resident, if you pay this, we're going to pay the up to a thousand dollars, the next part of it, and we're going to get you a good result. So moving in a positive direction with this. Last point, funding this year is coming from the water utility. Uh, the irrigation rate structure change that was put in place at the start of the fiscal year is designed to generate the cash that will be needed to run this program and some others that the city will be getting into in the course of the next 12 months. Happy to answer the questions.
Eric, I believe you had a question.
I did. Pete, who was our contractor we used last year?
Quality Cut Landscape.
Did they submit a bid? I don't, I don't have that in front of me.
Yes, they did. They came in at 19 cents a square foot.
Okay. What was, what was the current bid, the, the, uh, the potential winning bid at?
A plus lawn and landscape, 11 cents per square foot.
It's quite a differential. And what about the compost from Metro Waste? How does that process, uh, how does that process go as far as acquiring that material?
Sure. So earlier this year, we got in touch with our partners at Metro Waste and gave them a sense for how many we think we want to get done this, uh, season. And based on that calculation and what we saw as sort of an average application last year when we did the program, we calculated to need 1,200 cubic yards of compost, which Metro Waste then said, we'll get right on it. They set it up so that we've got that there for our program. If there's one recommendation I'll make to any other city, when you, if you're thinking about doing this, it's to talk to your compost provider early, because you can't just make compost overnight, and there's a ton of demand for it here in the metro. So you got to make sure it's well established that you need it.
Pete, final question. Why the option on reseeding? That seems to, uh, potentially make it more, just more challenging and add more admin or, uh, and, and time involved with that?
Sure. The seeding, if you, as resident chooses to do it, will be just an agreement between them and the contractor. The city will not be involved in that. So it'll be a separate invoice and a separate conversation that they have. It's a good business development opportunity for the contractors though, who do get in to, do get this opportunity because they'll be talking right there on the yard and talk about the benefits of reseeding. The reason we chose not to include it in the base price per square foot is last year we heard a lot from folks saying, wow, I wasn't expecting the big water bill to get the germination I needed to get in September and October. So we didn't want people to feel like they got locked into that expense to get the benefit of the overseeding, but could still choose to do that if they wanted to. Based on the response we're hearing from everybody who was on our list, it hasn't been a deterrent to, for people to participate. We still have dozens and dozens of people who are ready to step forward if any of the people who have made it onto the list this year decide to back out.
Now, I'll add a comment there. For, for me personally, like when I did this last year, I actually didn't want the overseeding. And so that was part of what, I almost didn't do it because I was like, well, I, I don't want to pay for something I'm not going to get. So I think, I think it is better that we have the option. Yeah. Uh, because everybody's situation is going to be different.
The win from the stormwater perspective is healthy turf helps, but grass itself, turf grass is not great. It's sucking up a lot of, uh, excess stormwater. The decompaction and adding the organic content, it helps us then catch and infiltrate the water. That's the key.
Good.
So I'm glad to hear you're not going to be doing all the spot checking. I appreciate your diligence and conscientiousness with it last year, but I, I definitely wanted to make sure we weren't, uh, going to be replicating that this year. I'm sure we have a lot of lessons learned from last year. Have we documented those? How are we communicating that to A plus? I mean, they're going to be new this year. So there's going to be a learning curve that, you know, Quality Cut had to go through last year. I remember it kind of beginning was a little slow, and then it picked up as it went on. So how are we bringing A plus up to speed on all those lessons learned?
A few different ways. So as part of the bid process, they had to submit a communications plan. Their plan is sufficient. They were able to tell us about some automated routing tools that they use so that they can get through the, uh, the community efficiently. That it also includes texting alerts to folks, letting them know we're coming to your yard when we're coming. That was, uh, something last year that took a lot of time because it was very phone driven and very email driven, and a lot of that was being done by the city. A plus has come forward and said, well, we've got some ways that we do this with our existing landscaping customers, where there's mowing or snow or other things like that. They're really built, I think, to, 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 to do that work well. So confirming that was something we wanted to make sure we did. Some other things we learned last year had to do with, uh, just making sure from the start, we are answering as many of the frequently asked questions as we can and are set up to field those. So A plus understands that our expectation is they will be one of those first responders when those questions come in. The city can play a backstop role and will play a backstop role if something elevates to the level of casework. Say an installation hasn't gone right or something got damaged. We definitely want to hear about that and make sure A plus is making that right. So we've talked with them about how that sort of case process went last year. The other thing that we learned last year is that the optimal time to do this really is in September. And so we've written the contract this year so that all of this has to get done with some punch list work that it could spread off into, into October. But I think we've got a big enough bite here of number of houses and square feet we want to do that it can all be knocked out in September with the sort of pacing that we achieved last year, getting about eight done a day, excuse me, not eight done a day. Maybe you call it what I, we, that number that we got to, escaping me, but yeah, regardless, we mapped it out so that it can be done in a month. And not, we, so we don't have to leap into those cold weather, uh, but a cold, that colder weather. You can do effective SQR then, but if you try and get the seed germination then as well, it gets a little bit tougher in those later months. So working with A plus, we've got a bite here that we can handle and not more.
So is, is that?
So is is that something that can be communicated out for those folks that do want to do overseeding so then we can try to get them earlier on the list potentially? So that I know that might mess up routes, so it might not be all at the very beginning, but at least we try to get them closer to the first half of September.
We'll need to see what the weather looks like in September. We still could be blazing hot in the front half of September. So I think we'll just need to keep adapting and see with that weather, but how those cards get dealt to us. But the A plus team have shown me that they understand what it takes to get good results. And I think we'll be able to field a lot of those sort of particular questions when we have our neighborhood meeting, which will be next week. It'll be a virtual meeting. And if we'll be recording it, so if people aren't able to join us, they'll be able to go and see it. We also have a very robust F A Q section on the webpage.
Teddy's being very kind to Metro. We learned a lot of lessons last year as well from this, right? From getting it out the door to quality getting out there and and holding up our side of the bargain too. We've been making this plus seven thousand square yards since March and April for Johnston, Grimes, Polk City. Right? So about everything on the pad right now is all the city's stuff. But we learned a lot of lessons from Clive helping us and some other cities teaching us some lessons too on billing, all that. So we'll make it smoother as well.
Yep.
I know it's a little too late, but August and September of last year was about eighty one properties and then Trevor, we have additional thirty one.
Okay, so we did get that eighty number knocked out, and that's the same number of properties approximately that we're trying to get this year.
Other questions?
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, close the public hearing, further discussion. Anyone in the chamber to address this on this issue? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post the vote to close the public hearing?
Aye.
That passes by a vote of five to zero. We have three items to consider.
Move a resolution approving plans and specs.
Second.
Motion second on item A. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, like sign? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Now to receive the bids on.
Receive the bids. Second.
Motion second for discussion. Being done with the council, please vote. And clerk, please post that vote. And that passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move a resolution awarding the contract A plus lawn and landscape for seventy one thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
The motion second on the resolution, further discussion. Being done with the council, please vote. And will clerk please post that vote?
Aye.
And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Thanks, Pete.
Thank you, your honor.
Amanda. Hope you wore tennis shoes tonight.
I tried to go for something comfortable. At least I did flats, so. Tonight, we have before us the Shadow Creek Peak preliminary plat. I will orient it this way for now. You can see Meredith Drive is up here, so this is pointing north. This is the north portion of the property. It is being proposed to be plotted as an outlaw for the future townhome development, as was consistent with the zoning change and development agreement approved at a recent meeting. But what we're focusing on tonight is the south portion of the property. You can see here they've laid out the public streets. We also have sheets showing the conceptual routing for the utilities. And then this is proposing to subdivide this portion into twenty seven single family lots. This is this portion is still zoned R one, so that is consistent with our R one zoning requirements on the lot sizes. Frontages and the setback requirements are all consistent there. And additionally, what has changed on this consideration from last time we were looking at this is there were a couple lots here along West Gate Parkway. There was a need to upsize the stormwater detention to accommodate the full stormwater management requirements. So what we see here is a larger stormwater detention for the south outlaw. The intent is for this to ultimately be accepted as a city facility. And you can see there is provision for trail to come along here that will ultimately, the intent is to be extended east into the future as well. This, we have additional redevelopment on those remaining estate lots in the community. So here's our conceptual utility routing, you can see is accounted for here. Staff has had some comments in recent conversations with this neighboring property owner, Nelson Property. He just raised some general concerns about the construction, grading tie offs, some of those details that we'll really get into with the construction drawings. The preliminary plat currently does show a little bit of grading tie off on his property. The developer indicated that that was an error and not necessary, and they're going to be revising that to show it being completely within the bounds of their lot. Ultimately, what would happen with that is, and we do see this regularly at this stage of development, if they did need to grade on to the adjacent property, they would have to get those temporary construction easements from that property owner. Typically, when we're at this stage, you wouldn't necessarily have those easements in hand. So if they do ultimately need to do any work on that property, they will be responsible for getting that property owner's consent and the legal documentation. So with that, this is meeting the city's requirements for the R one zoning. And we do expect there will be additional stormwater facilities up on the north portion with the townhome development. That will all be reviewed when we do the site plan preliminary plat for that portion, the outlaw. Plan and zoning did consider this, and they did recommend for approval at their last meeting. So with that, staff would recommend for approval of the preliminary plat for Shadow Creek Peak.
Questions for Amanda. Michael?
So with that dedication on that south side, I think it's the south side, right? Is that obviously a wet pond?
Yes, wet bottom pond.
And then the thought is fish?
Yes, it would have a depth that would be suitable for fish stocking.
Okay.
Is that city owned then, or is that going to be part of the H O A or?
So the intent is for that to count as their parkland dedication, which we've given half credit for in the past with facilities like in Shadow Creek, South and North. So this is a little bit more than double the size of the parkland they would need to be able to dedicate. So it would be given over to the city for long term ownership and maintenance after some yet to be determined percentage of the development and drainage areas complete. Usually that stormwater agreement to complete comes with the final plat. Once all the other public improvements are done, we will typically accept the public improvements except for the stormwater facility. Then that gets placed into a separate agreement that it's kind of specified for that drainage area specific, so it's not always seventy lots or eighty lots. It is a number that is appropriate to that specific drainage area and development.
So I can see some potential for some confusion there as far as the maintenance of that. At what so at what point then would the city take over full ownership and maintenance of of the pond?
It's usually around completion of ninety percent of the lots. So that is built, seeded, yes. Up till that point, they will have to maintain that, and then before the city takes it over, it has to be restored to the design condition and as built provided.
And forever we take care of the maintenance.
Right, and I get that, yeah.
So I'm wondering, is it, I mean, this may be premature, but I mean, with what we learned with some of the other ponds that we're we're dealing with now we've taken ownership of is, I mean, will that be part of the design process to to make sure that we've got sufficient depth on that pond, or how does that work?
Yeah, so through the zoning change and development agreement, staff and our engineering team identified specific requirements for the design that looked at both Clive's post-construction stormwater management manual and best practices from I Swam, the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual, and gave specific design criteria that that pond has to meet prior to the city being actually agreeing to accept it.
Great, right, thanks.
Other questions?
Could you show the pond again?
Yeah.
I could tell from that what the public access was going to look like. I'd like to understand that a little bit better, it looks like.
So this portion backs up to homes in Shadow Creek Plot Seven. So this will be people's backyards, but the public access we'll have is the trail section on West Gate primarily runs on this side of the street over here. But you can see this bit right here is a fatter gray line than it is once you get here. So there will be a transition across the sidewalk here. This portion will be a trail segment instead of just the standard five foot sidewalk, and then it will come in and around. The flat area paved around, you could walk on to get to different locations for fishing, but that is primarily a maintenance access path as well as this graded portion here between the lots will be a maintenance access path and storm sewer. That that's how the city in the future or the developer before turnover will bring an equipment to do maintenance on the fore bay, dredge that out, scoop out any sediment.
Other question?
That is paved along there, it's a paved.
This portion would not be paved, but the trail portion would be. With the equipment we bring in, we try to keep them off of paved surfaces primarily, just because it can tear up the trail. So we could design certain parts of that with the weight rating and different materials, but largely we try to keep the big equipment off the trail.
So I'm very interested in the public having access to this, so that's really the reason for my asking. But I know we've had public concerns raised about the most recent park. People being concerned about the activities that were going to be right there in their backyard. How is that being communicated to the developer in advance so people will know that's the expectation?
So we can work with them with their marketing materials, similar to like with Shadow Creek North and Vista. They showed the different ponds. They showed the future trail on their marketing materials. So we can work with this team to do that as well, so people will have a realistic expectation of what's going to be there.
Great, thank you.
And the pond will exist in this state prior to the homes being built, so the trail surface may not be there, but the pond will be.
Michael?
But the pavement around that pond that you're showing will be there when those houses are built, right? This white?
This isn't a paved section. It's just a flat, not graded section, so that will be seed type.
I don't know if we have another pond like this, but I've heard a lot of problems in Bondurant with ponds like this and built to then free future development. There are a lot of staff time on reeducating homeowners that that's not private property and that the public can be behind their house fishing and whatever else.
I know our parks department has been proactive now in setting those corner posts at the time of, well, basically when the final plats come in, they get out there and set those posts that designate that it's city property. So I'm assuming we will use a similar process here to get out and set that. So before the homes were constructed, there will be clearly marked at the back property lines where that property is.
Why not an accessible trail around that pond? So people, so anyone, regardless of their condition, can get all the way around.
We don't have the pond or the trail around a lot of our ponds like that, but yeah, I'll let Richard take on that one.
Yeah, so this is really starting to be a new area for us with the city taking ownership of the four new ponds in Shadow Creek, four, five, and six. And then this one ultimately. So one of the things we're doing is we prepared a kind of a management document for the chat, the pond in Shadow Creek Four. That was sent out to the residents out there to kind of review and see how that would work. And then that will come forward to you at your strategic planning to talk about how we handle these in the future. All of them are going to have that twenty foot wide maintenance path on there. We're looking at ways could maybe the mulch pass for the public to walk around. Mode pass down to the edge of the water for fishing access, like Amanda talked about, maybe having the through trail on a part of it. So I think what we'll have to do is just look at them on an individual case by case basis, but do the best we can to really articulate it's public space. The public can be out there using it for whatever uses we kind of work to identify out there. Some of the things we've kind of talked about with the Shadow Creek Four Pond is maybe we put a sign like we do on our neighborhood parks at the public access. So like here you do it on West Gate to say that it's a public space to really identify that. Also, like Amanda said, before the houses are going in up this area here, we're putting in corner markers to identify the city owned property versus the private property, and each one of those gets a sticker that says, City of Clive, Greenbelt or Park Property. Here are the uses that are allowed back here. It's a public space. And if you want to know more information, go to this point. And so that what that helps us do upfront is delineate that and mark that up very much front. It's a public space. This is what you can do next to it, but you can't take it over for your private use.
As as much as you don't want to take it over private use, you want to let the public know they can come back there, that it's okay.
Well, it's also going to be important that the builders who are building there are communicating that to their realtors, who are then communicating that to their to their buyers, right? So that there's an expectation when you move in of what what is allowed back there.
Is that realtor?
And I would say like Amanda talked about with Shadow Creek Four, Five, and Six, the builder, when they sold those lots on the market material, they had the green belt. They had future trails, so people knew to expect that when they bought those lots. We get not as many now that most of the lots are about built out out there, but when people are buying the lots, we would get phone calls or emails about once a week just saying, hey, is this true? Is this going to happen? What's it going to look like and when it's going to happen? So I think the developers do a nice job, especially with amenity like that, that's going to come articulating that as a selling point for that when they sell those lots.
This was a topic that I spoke at length with Lyle on and and emphasized how important it was that we have this on our agenda to talk more about. Richard has produced that management plan. You know, one of my concerns would be that there's some consistency between what the developer does and what we do so that that when they hand that off, that that it's in similar condition when we take it over.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and we'll get into a more strategic planning, but one of the lessons we've learned, so when Shadow Creek Four, the pond there was the first one. And so we've learned some lessons with the implementation of that, what the developer did, what we expected from them when we when we took over ownership. We've already started to implement that with the three new ponds in Shadow Creek Five and Six. We got a better seed mix down. We've asked them to mow it at periodic times, and now that we took ownership, we're jumping in and getting that man, that maintenance taken care of to get that landscape established better than it was on four.
Because we're talking about ninety percent of the homes being sold, that could be three, four years at least, right?
Yep. And you know, especially if you're working to establish native landscapes out there, the sooner you can get started on it. By that three or four years, then you can have a premature native landscape out there. So it's really imperative to do it right, to work with those developers and the people that are doing the construction out there too. So when we do take ownership, we're in a pretty good spot.
Your point that the depth of that pond is important, right? At the recycling facility, we had it dug twice prior to us taking over the ownership of it, right? From the grading company, yeah. And so we kept doing depth checks on it. And as it silted in, they had to do it pre dig it twice, right, before we took home.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve preliminary plan.
I would just make one other comment for the record. The applicant in this case is Dreamscape Home Builders.
Thank you, Amanda.
Due to my relationship with Dreamscape, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Maybe someone else could make.
I'll move the preliminary plat, Shadow Creek Peak.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And clerk, please post that vote.
Aye.
That passes with four affirmative and one abstention. Amanda.
You sick of hearing from me yet? So what we have before us tonight is a third amendment to the zoning change and development agreement for Shadow Creek North. I do have some public comment that did come in. So this request is to change the front setback for one of the cul-de-sac lots. You may recall for both Shadow Creek North Platts and in Shadow Creek West, part of the P U D does adjust some of these front setbacks to try to bring homes closer into line with each other when there are cul-de-sac bulb offsets or other kind of unique curvature features. So the developer identified this this particular lot after the plating was done that they believe would be better suited for the twenty five foot front yard setback. You can see here it's because of where it sits on the cul-de-sac bulb and the kind of odd shape of the lot. So that graphic's not all that helpful when you're looking at it in comparison. So what we have here is a shot of the plan and metric data for the city that shows the homes that have already been permitted and either completed or under construction around the house and the proposed house with the dashed lines. So this is that site plan digitized in at the twenty five foot front yard setback. You can see it still sits quite a bit behind this house, but it does bring these front corners of these two homes more in line. The public comment you've received is from this property owner here. Um, the public comment you've received is from this property owner here who did raise concerns that they felt changing the setback to twenty five feet for this lot. Would put this home in front of theirs. Um, with the orientation on this home to get it more. Um, a straighter driveway coming off the street there with the pie shape. Uh, even scooched back an additional five feet. This corner will always be in front of this corner of the house. Um, but we are close to being in line when you look at the front points. Um, so that is the only public comment staff has received on this one. Um, we do believe staff believes it is consistent with the intent in our zoning change and development agreement. For Shadow Creek North, where we did intentionally make some of these setback adjustments. And I know um, the property owner that is making the request is here tonight as well.
Amanda, questions for Amanda? I'll do want to invite comment from those that are here.
Hi, uh, my name is Garrett Losh. I live at one, seven, four, five, four Townsend Drive. I am the property uh, owner that I think Amanda was referencing. Um. I uh, I would even encourage you to vote no to this change to allow a setback to change from thirty feet to twenty five feet. Um, my review of city code indicates thirty feet setbacks are what's required. I understand there are special agreements sometimes made to make it less so. In this respect, in a cul-de-sac layout, a twenty five foot setback brings the house or proposed house next door. Five feet closer and in fact brings it more in front of our property. Uh, we obviously spent a lot of time working with architects, um, planners. Even made construction changes to try to get. A house that sat on the property and we made all those plans with plans of a thirty foot setback. To have it and allow a twenty foot, five foot setback. We don't feel is right. If you look at actually the site plat that she just showed. In my opinion, the lot is large enough to. Build a house without a change to a twenty five foot setback. I think a thirty foot setback is completely reasonable. Yes, maybe changes to the house or the or the layout would be necessary, but I think it's feasible. Um. I think there are other setbacks that have been looked at. Those are in slightly different settings um, that. Yes, they may bring it closer in line, but. In this setting, I don't think it brings it closer in line. In fact, I think it brings the house. Further towards the cul-de-sac and it's actually less symmetric in my opinion. So basically in conclusion, I'd encourage you to vote against this amendment, amendment three. To the Shadow Creek plat five um, amendment.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I'm interested in hearing from Amanda if there is a way to reorient the home as designed on the lot. At a little bit more of an angle. Or if that would encroach on setback requirements from the sidelines and if so. If the person. Opposing this is open to um, some encroachment to accommodate that angle.
So. What we have here is they're showing the garage at the front. And then um, they are meeting their setback requirements. They're eight and a half feet on this side. Um, they are just shy of sixteen and a half feet on this side. Um, I think with this particular house plan and the garage being oriented that way, it would be difficult to kind of shift the house um, with this plan. Uh, there certainly are other house plans that would fit on the lot. Um. But it would likely be difficult to kind of pivot it to align uh, more mirror image to the house next to it with this particular design. And I would have to let the um, property owner speak to why this design is what works best for them.
There are any questions? Maybe we can hear from the property.
Our first time in front of city council. Thank you for your work. Um, I don't know how this. Yeah, um, so we are uh, Tim and Lisa triplet and we are, our address is.
We are on that lot.
One, seven, four, eight, six Townsend Drive. Um, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on how we got to this point, but uh, we couple of years ago. Um, picked out this lot and um. When we picked it out, we paid a lot of attention to how wide it was and um. Did not think about the setbacks from the cul-de-sac. And uh, did not realize that there was going to be a setback from the back of the lot as well. And really, um. We don't, we're, this is kind of our wind down house. Um, kids are out of there. Um, we knew we weren't building a big house and we knew we had plenty of lot. Width wise anyway, to get done what we're we're getting done. So um. We were amiss when we took, we have the plan and uh, we've worked with the architect on it and. You know, put it on the lot uh, and it and it didn't fit. Um, or uh. So by a significant amount and it it has to do with those setbacks uh, front and back and um. So we uh, initially kind of had, where's that cute little? Just put it right there. Okay, so yeah, this got pretty close to fitting and uh.
And we did redesign the house in order to try to get it to fit.
Right.
We have spent some time.
This one fits, right? This design fits?
Yeah, that fits. Um, and um, the builder, the um, engineer, everybody. Um, just that we talked to said, you know, really uh, in the scheme of things that uh. You have two parallel lines and then you have a cockeyed house and um. You know, hey, the neighborhood's going to hate you. You're not, you're not going to look quite right. We did drives around uh, neighborhoods, kind of looking for houses that were cockeyed like that and um, we we just couldn't. Uh, really come up with exactly how it was going to look. Um. You know what I think is kind of significant also would be, and this is a little easier to see. Just because we highlighted the house when it's square on there. Um. So we are sixteen, almost seventeen feet off of uh, the neighbors. Um, and and certainly understand his concerns. Um, I I don't want to dismiss those at all. Um. But I I think having a cockeyed house would be better than kind of how this um, the the five foot setback. We're sixteen, almost seventeen feet from his lot line. I think it's required at seven or eight, maybe. Um, we're building a ranch.
Low profile.
Yeah, we even uh, um, have the pitches of the roof um, are really um. Low profile as well. We uh, as we kind of met with. Architects and all those, we we discovered we were kind of a low profile house. So I'd um. And then being so far off of that lot line just kind of felt like that was a um.
It's a unique lot and we were. Just trying to accommodate, you know, obviously our wishes with what was intended. With that development. And once we found out that other developments did alter the setbacks, especially in the cul-de-sac. We thought that may be an option. The house, no matter where it's at, is going to be in their viewpoint.
Sure. Well, Michael?
Maybe I could suggest a compromise or and I don't know if it's even doable, but. When I look at that, we're talking five feet, right? To the. Homeowner that's objecting and to yourself, what if we could do a variance on the rear lot? Bring the house back five feet. It's the same house, same design, all of that. I I don't know. We we we, I know we don't have the ability to give you a variance tonight. But what if we did that? And it's so staff, is that even a? Option or did I just speak out of line and got everybody in trouble?
No, um, if that was an option that was uh, attractive to both property owners in the council, I would recommend we actually just do that rather than adjusting the front setback. We just do an amendment that we bring back at the next council meeting that would adjust the rear setback.
You'd just be amending the rear setback than the, rather than the front setback.
Since we we can do that um, with the PUD agreement, it's just council action to make those changes to the development agreement.
Totally stunned that you actually brought value.
If I get a compromise here, I'm done for the year. Like I'm boom, I'm out, mic drop, we're out of here. Well, is it Mr. Losh, Mrs. Losh?
Losh.
Losh, would that be suitable?
I think that'd be very much preferred. Uh, when you make plans of this nature, you you're kind of trying to account for all the setbacks and everything else and.
Can you come up to the?
Sorry about that.
The mic, yeah, thank you.
I do. I think that'd be very much preferred. Um, most of the time when you're trying to arrange your house, you're trying to keep those setbacks all in line. Even when you're looking at purchasing the property, you kind of have an idea of what what you want to do and what the setbacks are. We went through multiple iterations, you know, and and uh, I think that would be less intrusive to us.
Are you talking five feet in the back?
Man, Amanda, real quick, can, what would that do? The five feet in the back with what the triplets have brought? Is there a way? How far does that go into the back?
Don't kill my negotiations here. I mean, this is first time ever I've tried.
Trying to help it.
All right, we'll see if I can do this. It would essentially. Put everything. About there.
Your head's in the way, but.
On these lines. So the fronts would be approximately. There. And the rear is approximately there.
So they would lose some backyard, but.
And cost you a little more driveway. Yeah, but just a little longer driveway, right?
Yeah. Uh, not that would be at a thirty foot. I'd have to verify if there's any utilities, but nothing that would be anywhere near that.
Bat house or anything like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So like.
The trip, the, Mr. Mister Triple, would. On the surface, is that? Doable? It seems like it could all just push back five feet and I don't, I would never notice five feet moving.
Asked about that initially and they just said it was easier maybe to modify the front rather than the back, but we were always thinking we could do the back. I mean, we definitely brought that up.
And I think that conversation would have been with the master developer.
Yeah.
I think the other part probably played into that conversation to a degree is. We have made modifications to front yard setbacks on these kind of unusual lots. So um, probably using the the premise of there's precedent for that.
Yeah.
It would make sense to follow that path. And certainly on these kind of interior, as I call them cul-de-sac lots. We have this house to house relationship challenge uh, quite often. So as Amanda alluded to with some of the other subdivisions in the Shadow Creek area, knowing that. The houses um, on a lot of these lots are are setback to setback. These are very big houses.
Yeah.
That exacerbate the uh, the challenges. So we tried to get ahead of that. Uh, where we could, where it made sense to the developer. Uh, but in this particular case, it just wasn't thought of, if you will.
Yeah.
Uh, but with respect to to. To the precedent, the precedent has been to modify the front yard. To allow that continuity in the front because as you can see with those irregular lots. That interior cul-de-sac pushes the house away from the cul-de-sac because of the radius of the street. That's what's really driving that kind of. Uncomfortable relationship house to house. Um. If you will, leaving the front and taking it out of the back, yes, there's probably uh, more regularity, if you will. Uh, you do create some level of imposition onto another property owner, which would be on the other side.
Oh.
Again, that it may not be an issue, but.
So while we're looking at that, assuming there's consensus on the five yard setback, what action would we possibly be able to take tonight?
Table.
Or do we?
Could you amend it?
Table and have that come back next time with the variance coming back, right?
That's my recommendation.
Just amendment, amendment, it's not.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
My recommendation because of the concern of other property owners nearby, it would be a more prudent. Step to table this, renotice whatever new action you'd like to take as far as an amendment to the back or a variance in the back. That that would be the more I I would recommend uh, approach today is to table. Revisit that for a new agenda, publish notice properly and then revisit it. And you could turn it down at that time and vote on it on the amendment uh, to the back. That would be my recommendation.
Is that, are you making a motion, Michael?
Uh, if I may, I just wanted to add, um, it's my understanding that behind our lot, behind uh, the triplets lot. And behind the lot next to it, which I think would be lot eight, uh, I think it's Clive Greenbelt. Uh, it's Woods, it's Little Walnut Creek, it's. I don't know, maybe half a mile to the houses anywhere behind it, so.
I might have a future as a mediator.
Are you making a motion, Michael? Don't get ahead of yourself.
I am making a motion to table it as Matthew changes this here.
Do we want to make a date certain for that? Would you need to go back to P and Z for this, Amanda? On the process?
Um, we certainly could go back to P and Z.
But you don't, but you don't have to.
The way the PUD agreement is written does not explicitly require plan and zoning action.
As you can do both parallel. Yeah, parallel over the next week or two.
Do the triplets have time?
Yeah, that would be the the hang up. Um, the next P and Z meeting would be.
The only reason.
Table this for two years.
The only reason I would ask is do you, do we do it the September fourteenth meeting?
Yeah, that would be.
That allows you a P and Z meeting, gives you a couple, gives the triplets a couple of weeks to evaluate the redesign, do your proper notice. Rather than the August twenty fourth meeting, your honors, the really reason I bring that up.
I guess that's exactly what I said as a motion.
Second, to be clear, we do have a second. Is there further discussion?
Yes, I do. Just to add to the reason I asked about the orientation is. Most typically you see developers working to orient the home to the street. As well as to adjacent properties. And so it is worthwhile to know what's on either side, but this. I I'm kind of surprised that they wouldn't have said. You know, have it be oriented to the street versus, you know, the lines of a lot. Which seems like there could be some room to maneuver a little. Both directions.
We'll look forward to seeing it on the fourteenth if this passes. Further discussion. If not, would the council please vote? This is a motion to table it till the fourteenth.
Aye.
And would clerk, please post that vote. And that. Passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, Catherine.
Hello, hello, Mayor and Council. Hope everybody's cooled off from Emerald Isle because we're going to go back. I think I kind of needed it. I think that's fine. Okey dokey, perfect. So we have a uh, request to approve a first amendment to the zoning change and development agreement for Emerald Isle Townhomes. Our applicant is of course Emerald Isle Land LLC. Subject property is generally located north of Emerald Isle Drive. East of Northwest one hundred and fifty sixth street and is currently planned for an attached townhome development. Um, notice regarding this request uh, was mailed to surrounding property. Um, notice regarding this request was mailed to surrounding property owners on July 25th. And to date, staff has not received any correspondence for or against the changes proposed. Uh, this first amendment would allow a reduction separation from 15 feet to 10 feet. Between the most eastern oriented, middle and south buildings. Which are, same way, throw some fingers here, these two buildings here. Uh, the amendment addresses concerns that were brought to city staff and the applicant by Des Moines Water Works and Xenium Royal Water. Regarding the development's proximity to the 24 inch feeder water main, which is currently located in a 25 foot easement on the north side of the property. Um, I've done some coloring for you all. Um, it is on this further half here. Um, this section here is the original layout. This is the new proposed layout. Does it zoom in any further? Five feet is very small in comparison to these. Beautiful, so this lovely little red X here is the corner that's closest to the easement line, which is in yellow. As you can see, it is relatively close over here. By measurement, it's a little under nine and a half feet originally. If we add an additional five, it gets us a little closer to 14 and a half feet distance there. Um, and then the blue is actually where that water main is located. Uh, with the reduced setback, additionally, the middle and north buildings are going to shift south by about five feet, uh, which allows the request additional space. Uh, this amendment also allows the necessary 20 foot separation between the middle and northern buildings to allow for the city's own water main extensions. All other buildings on the site will remain as represented on the original site plan here. So none of these buildings are moving. Sea staff would recommend approval of the first amendment of the zoning change and development agreement as proposed. I will take any questions.
Questions for Catherine. Five feet seems to be a common theme tonight.
I know, battle of the fives.
Why does the city need so much more space for our main requiring the 20 feet than is proposed? For the movement, I see, you know, we've got 10 between those top two buildings and 20 to accommodate us. Why is that?
That is theirs back.
Yeah, so, um, the difference is for the city's water main, it is going between two buildings. Where the Des Moines Water Works or Xenium is actually the main, Des Moines Water Works does the maintenance. Um, it's just hemmed in by one building. So that 20 feet is kind of our minimum water main easement. Um, and that is what our engineering department requested for that in case it ever had to be excavated. That way you're not actually getting into any structural concerns with the building. And that was accommodated without this change.
Okay.
Other questions? Move the resolution approving first amendment for zoning change and development agreement Emerald Isle Townhomes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussions. If not, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Eric, either.
Can you hear me?
Councilman, we've lost your audio. I can see that you're unmuted.
Uh, aye.
While we work on this, if you'd like to use the chat, you can send me your vote via chat. Councilman Clyde says yes. Okay, pretty good. It passes five to zero. Thank you, Matthew. Next, uh.
All right, hello again. Um, all right, so tonight we're starting the process of issuing our G O bonds. Um, as the city moves forward, you'll see that the timing of our bond issuance is, is critical to certifying our debt by December 1st. Deadline for the revenue to begin in FY 25.
Your honor, I want to add to this. The reason I had, uh, put this on the regular agenda, just wanted to note, this is a, the second bond issue that we're, uh, we've done this year. This is related to urban renewal bonds. These are general obligation bonds that'll be backed by tax segment financing revenue. And as we went into determining what the sizing would be of this bond, these bonds, we looked at what the available increment was in, um, the counties. Uh, in the city's respective urban renewal districts and the, and the available increment was quite high. And so it's our recommendation from staff and our financial advisor, PFM, to maximize on that available increment. And so the number that you see here tonight is a little, is higher than what we originally estimated for this bond issue. Because we didn't know necessarily where those increment values will be. We're not even coming close to capturing the available increment. And, but what we are doing is going up to our maximum amount that we can issue this year. So we sold our bonds this spring as bank qualified. So though that comes with a requirement that the city cannot exceed $10 million in terms of bond issuance in the year. So what we're doing with this bond issue is to maximize that, we're going right up just below the line. Of that, we also have to take the WRA's debt into account because that's an overlapping debt that we have to count against our bank qualification. We, we've done all that estimating, uh, in these numbers. We know that this number is solid, but what we're doing with this is advancing funding for some projects. That were coming up in these next couple of years that were, um, out, uh, in the CIP for tax agreement financing. Uh, the, the projects are listed in your packet, they're mainly street projects and development areas. Um, our portion of the Emerald Isle Drive, uh, between the bank and the, uh, townhomes that's being constructed currently. We have, we're obligated to reimburse, uh, the bank for the townhomes portion as a part of that deal when that was put together. Also, we know we're going to have some street work associated to the west end of the Quickstar. Site plan that you all approved, that's a road that's coming from Waqee that's connecting to Hickman. So again, that's all in the urban renewal area. And then the big one is the, uh, project to remodel this facility, uh, using those proceeds. It isn't the whole amount that we had outlined in the CIP, so we went up as far as we could to keep under the $10 million mark. But it puts those resources in place to move that forward. Um, and we'll be talking about that, of course, in strategic planning here in the next couple of weeks. But wanted to take a minute to outline that because we did change some things because we wanted to maximize. Um, the available, um, tax program financing revenue underneath the bank qualified cap. So that's all I have, your honor, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? I think it's creative and I like that, um, on that approach. So our. Setting a resolution setting public hearing on eight, 24, 23, 6 p.m.
Second.
Motion a second on the resolution just to set the public hearing. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote?
Aye.
Post that vote. And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Liz.
Here again, so the next three items are the TIF district. So it's, this is one of the districts, um, ordinance number 1137, um, in the larger urban renewal area. And it has a 20 year life, uh, life and it has expired. So per state code, we have to repeal it and file it with our county auditors. And again, it's the same story for 1138 and 1139. So, um, we have three expiring tip ordinances this year.
So what we need to do here is just suspend the rules and get them done.
That's right.
I'm going to move that the, uh, rule requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage. And two council meetings prior to this meeting be suspended with respect to ordinance number 1137.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote?
Aye.
And will clerk please post that vote? So the rules are suspended with regard to. Ordinance number 1137. Move that ordinance number 1137 be considered, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Motion second to approve the ordinance after we've suspended the rules. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote?
Aye.
And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number 1137 is declared to have been enacted. Move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to this meeting be suspended with respect to ordinance number 1138.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote?
Aye.
And would clerk please post that vote? Rules are suspended by a vote of five to zero. Move that ordinance number 1138 be considered, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote?
Aye.
And will clerk please post the vote? I'll do the heavy lifting, Ted.
Exactly.
Mediator, reader. Shoulders are getting tired carrying you guys. That passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number 1138 is declared to have been enacted. Move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to this meeting be can, uh, suspended with respect to ordinance number 1139.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote?
Aye.
Would the clerk please post the vote? Rules are suspended by a vote of five to zero. Move that ordinance number 1139 be considered, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote?
Aye.
And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance 1139 is declared to have been enacted. Now we've got two discussion items ahead. Is it going to take more than five minutes, Pete?
Yes, your honor. Uh, I think we'll stand in recess for five minutes then.
Call the meeting back to order.
Thank you, your honor. So I'm here just to briefly sort of. Start the presentation and then my colleague Ray will be coming forward to, um, take you through the technical pieces of this. One moment here while I start our screen. Ray, you want to have the notes up, right?
You're taking those slides, they are irrelevant to me, so go ahead and just present.
Oh, no, but just I gotta start the share and I want to make sure it's up.
I have the notes that I need.
Okay.
In school and whenever you tap me on.
Okay. Good. So tonight we want to make sure we, we give everybody an update on the current status of the work that's going out in the Little Walnut Creek corridor. And then talk about next steps, some choices that are ahead of the city as we finish up this very large, uh, last section of Clive Greenbelt. So starting with our current state of affairs, this is a figure, uh, uh. Image you've seen before when we went out and did our neighborhood meetings with residents from Urbaneale, Clive and Waqee. Showing them the phases for the Waqee sewer construction. Alice's road there is at the point between the yellow and the blue. And then moving east, you see the gray sections and the red sections. The two that affect Clive the most are the, the blue and the yellow. And currently, kind of toggling between the two of these, you see that the blue is, uh, where they started. And they have made their way starting into the yellow as well with the actual sewer installation. The area in blue previously did have all of the green belt amenities built there. Whereas the area in yellow, which is adjacent to a number of the Shadow Creek plots. That was an area that has always been represented as future work that will be coming, bringing the amenities, bringing the stabilization, bringing the habitat restoration. Today, uh, the, the neighborhood's been pretty quiet. We've continued to send them regular project updates. We've had limited sort of people pushing back. We've had limited sort of people pushing back from the start of the project. We heard quite a bit from folks about, really, is the trail going to be closed for this long? And yep, the trail's going to be closed for this long. But that is so we can keep things safe, and so that our contractor can move through efficiently as well. Any questions about the current status of the project? If you haven't driven out there, I encourage you, you're going to see a lot of big equipment in that area. Okay, so on to the questions. As a starting point, it's another diagram you've seen, and it's one that we like to come back to with frequency. This was from the 2022 resident survey. It's a way to look at the things that are of great importance to Clive residents, and also from their perception, things that we're doing with great quality. That top right quadrant, the things that are very, very important, and the things we're doing well, those are some of the most important things for all of us to stay collectively focused on. Natural environment, parks and recreation are right up there in that top quadrant. So when we talk about these investments, you're talking about investments that are very high priority for Clive residents, and it goes without saying, you can look at anything that Clive does and know that the Green Belt in general is right at the core of our brand. It's also consistent with our history. So these are fun images. If you have not been back in Jeff Tealyn's office before to look at some of his original Green Belt signs that are bolted up on the wall now, and some of these referendum posters from back in the day, it's worth it. Because the type of thing that we're talking about doing now.
What was that like, John?
These are all very much consistent with the original questions that were put before the residents. Do you want to have an investment in trails? Do you want investment in open spaces? Do you want an investment in stabilizing this stream, creating a wonderful amenity for all the adjacent neighborhoods? And overwhelmingly, the people in Clive have said yes. As we've grown as a community and extended the Green Belt West, we've also evolved sort of in our understanding of what it takes to maintain a Green Belt over time. It's not just a simple thing as putting the trail back there, or putting the Band-Aid on the places where we know the infrastructure is at risk. We really do need to be thinking about a more comprehensive approach to management and protecting everything that that space does for us. This image came from the most recent stream study in Clive, and year over year, when we do that, we are identifying project areas, in this case, project areas in the Little Walnut Creek sector area where there's a stabilization that can be done, or another improvement that can be done that's going to create long-term benefit. So with that, I'll pass it over to Ray, so they can tell us a little bit more about how our concept for the Little Walnut Creek corridor from Warrior Lane roughly to our eastern border with Urbandale has been evolving over the past number of months.
Can I just take a moment to ask a question? I know this is completely, well, it's Stream Bank related, but when you go down to the Jeff Carter property, how is that going, falling to trees and?
I talked to Jeff at the Clive Festival.
Sorry.
I hope he's recovered a little bit. I thought he had a little accident down on his vacation property, but from what I've heard, it's staying where it was supposed to be. Has it had a big, like, pressure test yet? I don't know.
No.
I know we haven't had a big flood since we did that, but we've had some high water, but from what he shared with me, it seems to be working out.
Okay.
We'll have more proof of concept as we go through the Indian Hills Woods project
Yeah.
and see how some of that natural material we used in there has been able to stand up, and much of what Ray will describe tonight as well will be, if we want to get into that level of detail, potentially using some of those practices that use the natural materials to stabilize the banks out of Little Walnut Creek.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name is Ray. My pronouns are they, them. I'm your Water Resources Engineer, and I'm a little off gilter, so Pete, I'm sure you can understand sometimes the storytelling, you have to go back to the beginning. So I'm going to go back to slide one just to put in a couple of important storytelling pieces that I think belong on these slides. So bear with me, I apologize. But for my own ability to say these things, I need to go back. The majority of the things that we're highlighting in these projects are nothing new. They're practices that we've seen before. Stream stabilization techniques in Indian Hills Woods, prairie restoration in other areas of the Green Belt, wetland creation at Meredith Drive, these are just to name a few. So for us tonight, the biggest question, pun intended, really is a matter of scale. The magnitude of this project represents a shift in the Green Belt management and a long-term view of how do we set ourselves up, both from a departmental level, but also a park user standpoint for success in a fully built-out landlocked environment for these long continuous stretches of park. We've already covered the phasing of this, but I do want to come back to sort of this division of east and west of Alice's Road. The blue phase is mostly done. We're expecting to have final restoration at the end of August and the beginning of September, and then they've already started moving west. And so, like Pete had already mentioned, a lot of this is already torn up, and it presents a really good opportunity, both for the east side in an area that we don't typically have construction access because there are already fully built-out homes, and also on the west side because there are currently not as, there's, the development isn't fully built out. So Waaki had approached us in 2022 for an easement through the Green Belt. We said yes if, and the yes if was largely contingent on those SRF funds, which plays into some of the rest of the technicality of how this plays out because of the separation of funding mechanisms. So SRF is state-involved funds and some creative funding that we have for the west side, those things are mutually exclusive. So that's something else that I wanted to say on this slide. Division of east and west, this blue and yellow comes back to both the opportunity presented because of construction easement access in an already built-out environment and also funding mechanisms. It matches the timeline, and this also, this timeline matches what I'd expect for the duration of work. We have 2.1 miles of sewer coming in, which is 2.1 miles of opportunity to build the Green Belt the way that we want to see it. And staff, I'm really grateful, has done a good job of balancing, okay, so we have 0.6 miles east of Alice's Road of an opportunity that is, could be looked at as a hiccup, and could also be looked at as an opportunity to do stream bank stabilization. We've also done a really good job of saying, what does it take to take that stream bank stabilization, not only the 0.6 miles where we can get today, but that remaining 1.5 miles west of Alice's Road? And I think when I say continuing, I mean continuing to think about stream bank stability, infrastructure protection both above and below ground, stewardship and ecological uplift, and I think the part that people feel more readily is that neighborhood connectivity and public amenity. Pete did a really great job of pointing out the natural environment, but I think something to worth noting in this project is that it's also a piece of safety and economy and utilities, so I'll hit those pieces as well. But Pete said a really great job of outlining the parks and rec and natural environment pieces. So I do think that this project embodies so much of our identity. The recreational experience provided to parkgoers up there in the top right quadrant, connection and well-being to each other and to our environment, and what makes a community feel like community, also in the top right quadrant. Expansion and protection of our utilities and our neighbors' utilities in a growing environment where like, we can't stop what people are doing upstream of us, so how do we make sure that we're set up for success? And the final piece of setting ourselves up for success is that commitment to fiscal responsibility in the execution of these projects. I know it's very exciting. I promise, we're going to talk about fiscal responsibility, and you'll love it. All right, so, yes, 1979, the, the points that you can't read in this photo, and I wish that I could blow it up and also have the sentence up at the top, is that we were already looking at this three-legged stool approach of, yes, we were going to put in trails, yes, we were going to do intentional plantings, yes, we were going to have paths and bridges in these open spaces, but those items that are on the charrette also break out into, this natural space is reasonably safe. The stream is accessible, touchable, hearable, and not presenting an unknown threat to infrastructure and property. So again, top right quadrant, safety. The space is accessible. It draws neighbors in, and it allows them to travel through. Again, top right quadrant, this is important to us. And the final leg of that stool is that the space is resilient, that we can come back to it season after season, but also the ecosystem, the ecosystem diversity and the soil structure are playing into the way that we stabilize these spaces and keep them stable in longevity. So as we had shifted our management strategy, we started taking these five-year looks. What does the stream look like for this five-year? And largely what we saw were, in the 2019 assessment, were a bunch of little projects that, sure, we could go in, Band-Aid approach, as these banks start failing, we could come in and fix them one at a time, but you have to have access, you have to have the time and labor, and this is largely a responsive sort of Band-Aid approach. So we'd like to shift away from the what is on fire in this moment and set ourselves up for success long-term. So not the Band-Aid, but how do we go in while we have access to it once and do it right? What does that strategy look like, and how is it different than what we've done in the past? And all the way back to slide one, it's not different than what we've done in the past, other than scale.
Are you going back to slide one?
Nope. I know, I know you really wanted to. Thank you for letting me get my momentum back under me. I appreciate it, Council. So we started to explore both how maintenance and labor capacity on our crews might limit the impact that we could achieve, and so we thought, yes, do it once, do it right, what does that look like? Started CIP conversations 21, 22, projected that we would need 6.9 million to bring the, the Green Belt from Alice's Road to Warrior Lane. And again, those three legs of the stool, three legs of the stool, is the natural space reasonably safe? Is the space accessible, and is the space resilient? And then the final, the new-ish piece, we have never been on the dealing end, we've always been on the receiving end, is about the ECA restoration. The ecological restoration is both how do we leave the soil, and how do we leave the land? How are we managing invasive species? What kinds of things are we planting in their place? We were interested to see, can we have the Green Belt pay us back? And so when I say we've been on the receiving end, we have had to buy into a mitigation bank. We have never been able to dole out the credits. So we solicited Stan Tech in part because they had experience with these other components, and in part because they knew something about mitigation banking. A mitigation bank, in short, is an agreement between a regulatory agency and a sponsor. In this case, our regulatory agency is an inter-agency review team. It's the Army Corps, the DNR, Fish and Wildlife, and the sponsor can be a public agency, a not-for-profit organization, private entity, in this case, it's us. In a banking instrument, a mitigation sponsor, us, agrees to put our own dollars into a natural space to create uplift or a specific, to create a specific environment, or create uplift in a specific environment, like a riparian corridor or wetland, then that uplift is quantified, and then add, after a certain time, you can turn around and sell those credits back. So my boss really, really, really wants you to know that we don't see that money immediately. There's a five-year observation period to establish that, yes, in fact, we did build a wetland, we did provide riparian uplift. We need five years to make sure that, that that's true. And then we can either use those credits for our own projects, or we can sell them. Either way, the dollar figure on that, based on the work that Stan Tech has done west of Alice's Road, is $3.7 million. That 3.7 comes with restrictions, so we can't mix and match SRF funds with banking because they don't play nicely. So public money typically excludes work on a bank. I mentioned the restriction of five years, and the mitigation banking piece really is why we need to separate and have set the east and west, even though they are the same corridor, need to be run as different projects. So when we're looking at this first project, wheels are already turning. I want to bring us back to this timeline. The east side, the blue, is the stuff that's covered under SRF, up to $1.1 million. As we've looked at not only what does that stream restoration take, but what does it take to put back the trail? The price tag on that total project is over what SRF can pay for. Additionally, SRF is only sponsored water quality projects, so they wouldn't have paid for us to put our trail back anyway. The hole on that is 1.6. So for 2.9, we can restore neighborhoods' access to the Green Belt. We're expecting the work to be completed in 2025. That is what we promised our residents, and I do believe we're on track to do that. We have 1.1 million coming in from SRF via Waaki. We have an additional 200,000 coming from Polk County, from ARPA funds that are not going to a different practice. So there's 200,000 from Polk County on the east. There's also additional funding from Polk County on the west. So staff has already been moving to figure out what are ways that we plug the hole, and we've already got funding sources identified. I'm sure there will be more coming online as we really nail down what does, like, what do the trails look like and that kind of stuff. My hands are shaking, which means I've been talking for too long. Does anybody have any questions in the interim?
One thing I'll offer too, real quickly, is the Polk County donation isn't in hand yet. It's something we're discussing with them right now on both sides of the east and west portion. And I can say for this east, the east project's pretty much baked. We've got to get that out to bid as soon as we get permits here this fall to try to get that trail back to the commitments we made for the neighborhood. We have cash in hand, funding's been identified for the gap. We're ready to go with this portion of the project. So I just wanted to make sure to clarify that on the Polk County donation, too. So if the Polk County donation takes a little bit longer to come in, we've got cash in place, at least for that portion, and we basically reimburse ourselves for that piece, depending on how, if we're successful with Polk County, how they want to see the dollars allocated.
Thanks, Matt. Susan, I saw your hand.
Yes. So with the mitigation banking, you mentioned that it doesn't play nicely with SRF funds.
Correct.
But also, right after that, mentioned public money, and we'd be talking about our public money. So is it different?
I guess when I said public money, I meant the, like, other entities that are state-run sometimes have restrictions on their dollars. I might just not know how to use that word. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah.
But our local
Yes.
investment would be eligible.
Yeah, that sounds like I just biffed. Thank you for clarifying.
I'm going to ask a bit of a tangent of a question, which I know everybody will love.
Chalker.
The mitigation banking credit, is that something that we could, I mean, obviously, if we use it here, that would be our first use, but can we look at using that at other areas? Like, I'm thinking about the 86th Street, you know, we've got the plan down in the future to make that into a wetland area, and I heard you say wetlands.
So in this case, we are generating credit either for our own use to be able to develop over a wetland or riparian area, or for some other developer to be able to do that, but similar, and I'm not sure if this is your question, a similar process could be used in other parts of the Green Belt. So this is sort of our first foray into the mitigation banking process, but what's really cool is that usually these things happen in more rural areas. And so you get this ecological uplift in a place where nobody can see or touch it. What's really unique about this situation and our potential for using mitigation banking strategies in an urban area is, one, like, often, urban and suburban projects are the ones that generate the need for credits because they're the ones doing the development. But also, these are the communities that don't often have access to these things. How many times, like, can you walk out into your backyard, get into, well, leave your backyard, enter the Green Belt, get on a trail, and then go see a wetland? So yes, it can be done in other places. This is not intended, this doesn't have any offsets in mind. It's not like we're saying, let's generate $3.7 million worth of credit for a specific project. Right now, it's just nebulous bank, and there could be more bank in the future if this pans out for us.
What I would add to that is, if, if we decide that there's a portion we do want to sell and generate revenue from other than our own projects, because we'll have our own projects where we could potentially use a portion of the bank for our own compliance or mitigation, but if we sell, what that could potentially do is fund future projects, I think to your point, on 86th Street, or the Indian Hills, the remander of Walnut Creek that we've talked about, that that could also be a funding, this could be a, the future revenue could be funding sources for other stormwater projects down the line. I think the key point is for this particular project where you're setting this up, the city has to have the cash upfront to do the project. The revenue will come in later. And so we'll talk about that more when we get to the west side, when you see those revenue sources.
I think something that I'd like to add is that while you have to have the cash in hand, a lot of the ecological restoration that we're talking about is stuff that would have happened anyway because of the grading extensive, either the stream stabilization or the trail. So there's a lot of, like, I just imagine somebody missing spots when they shave their legs, like, one swipe is the trail, one swipe is the stream. There's a certain amount of money come back to get the spots that you missed, but for the most part, we'll hit a lot of that ecological restoration in the first two projects, and so we're not spending extra money to make the bank because we were already going to do it right from the onset in terms of what species and management we were expecting to do. Sorry for shaving references at council. I can't be as funny as Councilmember McCoy.
Same problem with my legs.
I thought so. I'm glad that we can connect on that point. So we have our 2.9 million, our gap, our ways of closing the gap, and that will bring the amenity back to the east side. We have been representing to communities and development out west that similar things would be happening. So we had originally 6.9 million to, that didn't fully match what we represented to those developing communities. That's not, not to say that we weren't committed, we just didn't have our heads wrapped around the whole project yet because we're still learning how to shift our management style to accommodate big scale. How do you do big Swazza Park all at once and set yourself up? big scale. How do you do big Swazza Park all at once and set yourself up for success instead of these one-offs? So staff commitment to the green belt manifested both on stage and behind the curtain in 2007 with the Northwest Neighborhood Master Plan showing these connections. And so what I want to do is draw your eye to these little red stars, um, because they show up on the next slide. I think it's almost eerie how the locations of these neighborhood connections have been maintained through this sort of behind the scenes. We have been doing easement acquisitions to make sure that we can provide those connections when this project comes through. And I even need to frame this underpass to nowhere as sort of like an infrastructural commitment. Sure, we didn't get there as soon as everyone expected, but we are headed west and we're coming with something big. And so I guess this is the moment where I say that this restoration is ambitious. I think it's as ambitious, as ambitious as the original purchases made to start the green belt in the seventies. But it comes back to that same intent, that the streambank stabilization makes the space naturally, makes the natural space reasonably safe. The trail installation makes it accessible. The plantings and the management make it resilient. And that's what makes a good project, that you can repeat the intent 40 years later, 50 years later, just kidding. And it still holds, because it was a strong stool to begin with. So I'm hoping by now that I have you convinced on that point. Because this slide hurts. So we originally allocated 6.9. When we're looking, that did not include all of the individual neighborhood connections because we were looking at a linear foot along the corridor just for the main stem of the trail. It also didn't include one of the bridges. It also didn't include some of the very specific stormwater ponds incorporation. So those are the big, and then the last pieces that doing that many linear feet of stream restoration was also more expensive than we had originally anticipated. So there's a gap. We have identified some funding sources and we're hoping that the, if council approves of using the mitigation bank, that we'll have that revenue. Again, not immediately. It would take some years to come online. But this is more than we bargained for. And it's to be able to pay for what we've represented to those communities and to really set ourselves up to. Because once, once the developments are there, uh, it gets a lot harder to access these spaces. So you're talking, we saw those, and I'm sorry it's so small, but those little red slices are maybe 20-foot easements in between people's properties. If you wait too long, now you have to bring construction equipment in between people's homes in order to put a trail there. The window of opportunity really is now. The question is, are we ready to, like, bite this off? Is the question, is the answer to the question, yes. Can we commit to this level of a green belt restoration? Did I do it justice, Matt? Or am I supposed to be more emphatic? I think I'm supposed to be more emphatic. I need to know is this answer yes?
It's very good. It, it, again, it's a, it's a big question, right? And I think Ray and, and Pete did a great job of that. You know, this is really taking what we've learned from green belt management and the existing parts of the community today, and how can we learn from it? And set this area up for success for the long term. Does it require a big upfront investment? Sure, it does to do that. And hopefully we, and our goal is to do it right and have it sustained. It still needs to be maintained, just like any asset that we have. But we have commitments in terms of having those trail extensions, uh, going out to the west. Is this a huge commitment from our capital improvements program? Sure, it is. I think tonight, really what we wanted to try to get, um, connected with the council on, especially as you go into strategic planning next week, is this is, this is a wow project for this community and how we can set this, uh, particular neighborhood up. As you were talking about development plans and areas tonight for this particular neighborhood, how can we really set it up for that long-term success and really as a, as a quintessential Clyde neighborhood with the green belt in the middle of it? And it takes some investment to do that. I would argue that if we, you know, don't make some of these investments now, we're gonna be coming back to, to, to deal with those issues, probably at a much higher number down the line. So again, why it can look like a big number today, these are things that we have to, to manage and look at in our capital improvements program and how we can scale it. I feel comfortable that we can come back to you all. If this is, if this vision that Pete and Ray have laid, laid out to you is, is meeting what your expectations are, let us figure out the how, how we, how we bring this back and fund it. And there's grant opportunities that we haven't even talked about that, that we still want to pursue, particularly for that west piece. And also the wetland mitigation bank is something new for us that I think it's time for us to, to try out. Because I think there are a lot of other opportunities along the green belt that we want to pursue if we're successful here. So we had kind of this unique situation where Waki approached us, had a sewer to do. They created an opportunity and a revenue source for particularly that east portion that we talked about earlier. But now it's, okay, how far do we want to take that opportunity? And we think this is a, a vision for taking it to the next level.
We're showing that 3.7 million as a funding source. Is that a guaranteed source, this, this, this bank?
No.
We're guaranteed 3.7 million? Because if we're not, then it's even more of a lift.
The 3.7 is our best book down the path at this point. But we would have to prove, as Ray had said, we still have to prove that the credits have that actual value. And that validation happens from our friends at the Corvage.
So that investment could be significantly more than what we're even showing.
Well, and I would say that the investment is the full number anyway, because that, even if we were to realize that 3.7 million, it might take five years to get it. So to build the project, the contractor has to get paid upfront. And so we'll need to find the cash to do it upfront anyway. What I would say is that revenue source is funding the next project, whatever that may be. And so for us, I think there's, again, the how, how we get there is, is things that we want to work out. We still have questions to work out with Stan Tech on even the constructability of this scale of the west side that you see in one chunk. Does that need to be phased out just because of the scale of what we're talking about here?
Could you go back to the?
So those are other pieces that we want to look at.
Metro Waste Authority did a nine-acre wetland bank, right? Where it's now just realizing its value and we're about to sell. Oh, once it's actually gone up in value since what we predicted it five years ago, right? More and more folks are needing it, especially cities in the interior metro areas are needing those banks. But even businesses needing that bank, but is it guaranteed?
Right. So I think the better way to look at it then is the 2.9 plus, what was the other one? 9.5?
9.5.
So it's really 11, 12, 4, irrespective of, of, of that, right? And because, like you said, we could use that to offset other projects potentially. But the cost for this is, is really, it's 12.4. And then, okay, we get a couple hundred thousand from Polk County, whatever, but.
And then the millions in there from Waki as well. So it's roughly 10 million is the proposition here.
And I don't think you're arguing the value of the wetland mitigation or the banking. And it's something that Shrikanth said, I, I agree, we need to continue doing more of in, in how we're situated with the Walnut Creek and some of the projects we're doing, buybacks and axbows, making that a way. I mean, those are only going to be needed more and more, those credits. MWA is looking at building more purposely for that. And actually, we just used ours for credit for us from east to west, which is a little dicey, letting you do it that far away. But we were able to do it so internally. To your point, I would like to see us continue to invest in that future, but you can't count on that money. Five years or 10 years down, somebody's gonna use it and bank it here. It's an investment.
Do I recall correctly that we might need some credits for some of what we've talked about in the west of Alice's Road park area? I'm thinking for some of that.
I don't think we would need credits for the proposed park improvements that would be north of the creek. As we at least would conceptualize them right now. Maybe Doug, you can speak to that a little better.
I don't think this is gonna be.
Could you come up and say your name and your address, please?
Hi, I'm Doug. I don't believe that we're gonna have any specific credit needs for ourself for projects. What you may have heard from others is, uh, development that is adjacent to our projects have had needs. For example, the Shattered Creek Peak project that you just considered tonight has both a stream and a wetland impact. So they're gonna have to go buy the credits from one of the local agencies. Unfortunately, ours won't be available for, for the, the time period. But, uh, there have been quite a few purchases, which has been part of our thought process all along is there's a market out there and we have the asset that if we just figure out a way to leverage. Yes, it is speculative, no doubt about it. But I think you are continuing to see, um, which actually is a little bit of the scarier part. You're seeing the market realize that there is an absolute value in this proposition. So I do think that there is upside potential beyond what is being represented, provided that, um, the supply of these credits doesn't become so popular that the values come down. But the bank instrument itself simply establishes the number of credits that we have available to sell. We are then the decider of what those costs are to the buyer. Uh, so if we decide we needed the cash, lower the price. If we're willing to let it ride out, sell them at the right time. But those are all our choices to make. This is simply establishing how many credits that we would be entitled to, provided that we deliver the product that's, that's being represented.
I just remember being surprised with what HDR had suggested might enable some holding capacity for water that would be valuable in that park, that it was actually going to take some credits, that the core was.
Though I could speak to that, um, okay. Then Ray, chime in with the engineer in this. So this is a, a data point that we plan on bringing for either as appropriate strategic planning or in a separate presentation. Part of the arrangement with Polk County for them to get behind their investment in this project is, um, answering another question about how much we can do with the regional facilities that are up and down Alice's Road. So it's the four facilities. We're called this one that's on the map here, the Berkshire Basin. That's the one that's in Clyde. Then you work your way north and there is one particularly large opportunity that we've called the Findlay Basin that's in Future Grimes. As we've modeled that, and we just got an email tonight, uh, with a more complete sort of rendering of what that shows us, we're getting a better sense for what would the surface elevations look like for floodwaters in some of our most flood-prone areas? If we did all of them. And in general, what we're seeing is you have to do all of them to get a substantial downstream effect. Because you would have to do all of them, it makes the odds of it actually getting done a little bit tougher, not impossible. What we've also learned as we've studied this is that while, yes, we can potentially impound water with, depending on what kind of, or what kind of structure we can build at Alice's Road or can't. As we hold that water there, you're right. We would have, the core has consistently said, just like with the other basins, that we would need to buy credits to do it. But the bigger challenge would be if we started putting silt and other things that floodwaters carry into the mitigation bank, we would have to then go in and do the restoration to the bank. Now, the way we've been talking about it internally as staff, the opportunity with the bank is more valuable to us than the more minimal downstream effect for flood surfaces, floodwaters in our, some of our flood, or flood-prone areas. Doesn't mean we can't potentially in the future do something, but the value of that banking instrument is very high. Potentially, we wanted to protect that opportunity first. I say all that like it was like, we've got it perfectly figured out. What you see in all this and what we want from all of you is this iteration, keep talking about the opportunity and the costs. So we can really dial in on the right way to get this spilt.
Find are these costs? Are they just kind of swags at this point?
The streambank restoration piece on east of Alice's Road is at the 95% complete. Trail is at 60% OPC. Everything west is kind of lingering in that 30% because we wanted to make sure that this was the direction that council wanted to go before spending more design effort to go further. So cost estimates west are about 30%. With better resolution on the mitigation banking pieces and the ecological restoration, because those seem more baked. Does that answer your question?
Yes. We have, uh, looked at opportunities in that process of immediately pulling out some things, because we knew they were expensive. So west of Alice's Road, we looked at two bridges in addition to Westgate Bridge and have decided that because of the big cost associated with each of those bridges, bridges that we'd bring it down to one. So we've already started to do that value engineering look, but it's still gonna be expensive.
And the price of that setup for the mitigation bank setup, i- is that construction for it, or is that all professional fees?
Part of this is professional fees to make sure that all of the ecological components have been appropriately documented and submitted. So we've had internal conversations about how we would want to delegate. Are we going to pay somebody to come and plant for us? At what point could or would parks take over either on installation or management? And those things are still up in the air, but generally, we would be looking at, um, outsourcing installation for the habitat pieces.
Eric, I see you there. Have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the presentation from everybody. It's obviously a big ask. Uh, I think everyone realizes that I do like the proactive outlook to this, getting ahead of the issue. It's not going away. And we talked about this for years. A couple of questions. One, do you think Polk County will be okay with 200,000 dollar donation to the project in Dallas County?
I expect that that action will come still this fall. They need to, they, these are ARPA funds that they're moving, so they'd like to see them into projects quickly and having a positive effect. There, we're also getting a half a million dollars from them through the ARPA funding for Green Belt Landing. So we've got an interest in moving this ahead quickly as well, because we're gonna have that one out to bid and want to be able to demonstrate to the entire community that we've hit our fundraising marks and invite others to keep the momentum rolling with us. So I'd still say here in the third quarter of 2023.
I think something too, uh, sorry to interrupt, Clint. I think something too that's interesting is the, would Polk County be interested in spending money in Dallas County? Part of what made that answer yes was connectivity, because as Waki is talking about redoing Warrior Lane and extending the trail that direction. And then what, uh, pieces of trail Urbandale has left, you have many miles of connectivity through a green belt. And that is sort of invaluable beyond the county lines. So part of the reasoning they originally said yes was because of the connectivity piece of the corridor.
What's the proposed timelines on the various projects associated with this?
I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry, Councilman. I missed the.
Timeline.
What's the timeframe, the timelines you're looking at for these type of projects? There's a lot, a lot going on here.
Right. So the timelines that we've committed to for the project east of Alice's Road is set. We said we're gonna have the amenity back in place, the restoration work, habitat done by summer 2025. That's what's on the yard signs that are out there as well. West of Alice's Road, we have choices. There can be some advantages to setting these things up in phases and still preserve access, because we haven't taken it out too far into the future. We have considered a couple of sort of logical points to consider for phasing. Get it to Westgate Bridge, for example, and then from Westgate, a little bit further west, and then to Warrior. The other part of phasing that makes some sense and may help us realize some savings is the Alice's Road road project is coming in at a similar timeframe. And we're gonna have a better picture later this decade about how Waki is going to come to Warrior Lane with their trail. And then also, how are they gonna kind of get through the road there as well? So if we do our phasing correctly, it can better match up with some of these infrastructure projects that are going alongside it.
That's all great, and I appreciate that. But I'd like to hear a little bit more detail on that timeline and some actual dates or at least years to give us an idea.
I see this as something that would take the rest of this decade for sure.
I would, I would say on the west portion, uh, Councilmember Klein, uh, we still need to work out those dates. I think the earliest we could start on the west portion would be bidding it out a little over a year from now, whatever that first phase is, which primarily most of the construction would be in 2025 and trail in 2026. And so, and you can, uh, see it there in the screen that how it kind of blocks out. But you're talking at least two to three years, because we need to get the east portion done, uh, first. And that's hopefully gonna be bid this fall with most of the work in 2024. So again, the earliest you're at is 2025, 2026 for this west portion.
To commence.
To, to commence. And so you're talking, depending on construction schedules and how things, if things get phased out, construction timetables, and obviously a number of these things are also weather dependent, too, in terms of the time of the year, that's the best time to do it. It could easily be three to four years to have this all completely done and all the trails, uh, neighborhood connections extended. And that's then under, I would say, the best case timeframe.
And so Matt, between east and west, we're looking at a 10-year project, roughly, you think, or?
I wouldn't say a 10-year project. I think that would, I would say five, probably more on the order of five to six. I, I definitely think 10, that would be piecing it out maybe a little bit too much in a 10-year timeframe. I think five years is more realistic.
Thank you.
So that's sort of how I got to this end of the decade sort of ballpark figure.
Do you have Indiana bats we have to worry about? Nothing good comes from Indiana. So.
Um, so to follow up.
My family comes from Indiana.
That nine and a half million upfront cost, is that all upfront, like truly upfront in one fiscal year? Or is it amortized out over multiple years? How does that work?
So I would say, um, and this is the how part, right? That we would figure out, there's some ideas that I have, uh, at this point. I think if you're phasing it, you're of course blocking it out over a series of years. If you're talking five years of construction, you block out that funding need over five years. I would say one thing that I want to look at is we do have some cash on hand already. The city has bonded for portions of this project already. We have money in the capital account to fund east. We have some to get started on west, not enough to fill that whole hole. But then it's a question, okay, what's the gap that's left as we hone this cost estimate and maybe look at phasing? So let's say if the number is roughly six to seven million that's left to fill. One thing I would look at is a couple of different ways is there's the stormwater. There's the, the, the stream bank restoration portion, and then there's the trail portion. Trail is kind of typical geo regular debt service kind of capital improvements project. So would that be kind of geo funded, regular debt service, the stream bank stabilization? Would that be our first foray into a stormwater? A geo, a general obligation debt that is issued that is backed by stormwater utility revenue. That would be our first time doing that. And we've talked about that, we talked about that. In terms of the Water Resources Master Plan of these projects, some projects are going to be significant enough. That we may look at bonding these out, you know, over ten, fifteen years to have the revenue to be able to do the projects upfront. And then what you could do as an option, if you are starting to get wetland mitigation banking revenue in. You, you know, the council could make a decision, the city could make a decision to take that future revenue and buy down your debt service in the future years. Now, I would say you have, we have enough projects in front of us that that. Might not be, it just depends on where the interest rates are at that time, what would be the most effective way to do it. But now you have some choices by making that investment and creating this new financing tool. You could use it as revenue to buy down your debt, or you could use it as revenue to pre-fund or cash fund a future project.
So ten million dollar investment, significant investment. I'm sure there's some level of opportunity cost.
Yes.
With that, I would like to understand what that looks like, whether it's in timing of projects that have to be pushed back. Or certain things that aren't going to be done because we're going all in on this.
Yeah. And that's exactly the, the next level of iteration that we want to present to you. And so today, tonight is really the first, the beginning of the conversation, knowing that we've got strategic planning and we've got your CIP development coming right after that. Our goal is to, if, again, if the, the vision of what we're trying, what we're trying to achieve with this project makes sense to the council. We'll come back with the how of how we get there and what are the opportunity costs? Um, because there will be some, uh, for a project of this scale, I won't, I won't sugarcoat that by any means. And then it's, it's that also, I would also argue there's an opportunity cost. If you don't do this, what is it down the line and is it vastly more expensive? I can tell you that is the answer to that is yes. So it's weighing those opportunity costs on both sides, right?
That's fair. The other piece of that to keep in mind is that the creek doesn't stop moving. The cutting and spreading that's happening on Little Walnut Creek is already substantial. You can see east of Alice's Road in those homes that were part of the home show, some of the very serious infrastructure they, they've installed to try and stabilize their properties. We have steep and eroding banks on the west side of Alice's Road as, as well. Um, right. You can show you a couple of butts pictures here, but. Because it's already here in many respects. More time is not going to make that situation better and our access opportunity could be further. Bad pond bed, we're just here, but could further erode.
Well done.
Thank you. Thank you. You like that?
I think to raise point earlier though, it, it. It's going to be expensive, but think about the chambers of the folks that are going to be here when we start telling them we're digging through their houses, putting these access points. After the fact, right? And although we always say.
Well, not now on the side.
Yeah. Although we always say, well, it was planned there and you saw it, it was in your development app and. The, I don't want that trail through my yard. I don't want it in my backyard, right? Because we're hearing it over here again. So to raise point, get in there, do it now. Eliminates financial, but also political, public. Not that that's helps us financially, but. The expectations there by the public and by those properties. But I don't know where we're coming up with ten million. That's my problem.
Thank you. Well, it's, it's, uh, this is what we needed tonight. We needed to make sure we got all this out to you all early to understand. As we go into strategic planning and the CIP process, that this is one of those. Big improvements that we have represented to the community. To some scale, and now we have a choice to make about how big do we go and answer that how question of how do we pay for it?
Where does this connect to Walkie's trail system?
It doesn't yet. And that's part of that sort of future. Connect question that we, that phasing might help us better kind of answer. We know that they've got a series of wetlands that they're constructing on Little Wellness Creek to our west. That'll have green spaces that we believe are going to have kind of a trail corridor that goes through there as well. And so there will be some future connectivity, but I, do we know what their timeframe is for Kevin?
You say Walkie or Urbendale?
Walkie.
Oh, Walkie.
Do we, have we seen a timeline for when they have those improvements scheduled?
We haven't seen a timeline, but we just today got, um, some sketches of what they thought that connection at Warrior Lane could look like.
Okay.
I see that as being very important.
Connecting to the high, I know that they looked at wanting to connecting to the high school, the high school over there that they, and the amenities that are there. I mean, they, early on in this conversation, when we were talking about the sewer, there was, this was even the previous city manager of Walkie. He really wanted us to realize this vision of that interconnectedness between Walkie, Clive and Urbendale in this corridor. So there's definitely a desire in Walkie to take this and run with it, for lack of a better term, to the west.
Yeah. And for the proof of that, not only are they making these wetland investments and sort of setting up their own green corridor. But to get Urbendale on board with this project, Urbendale forced them to go and purchase property in Urbendale. That they were having some troubles with, that will have a future trail connection to the east, which will better take the trail segment we have now that goes. Really from Urbendale into Clive and better connected to the south and all the other things going down through their Walnut Woods Regional Park. And down to the, uh, Raccoon River.
Yeah, I just think that's really important that we make sure we get some commitments on that because otherwise we just got. You know, uh, a disconnected trail.
Two trail segments.
Doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah, right.
And that's.
Fox Culver to nowhere.
Fox Culver.
What I'll tell you is those conversations.
New and improved.
But where's Dallas County in this? We talk about Polk County putting two hundred thousand up. Where's Mark Hanson?
Four hundred thousand.
His two hundred.
Two hundred thousand east and west.
Okay. Well, again, so where's Dallas County's four hundred thousand or ten thousand or fifty thousand? Have we engaged with them?
The engagement we've had with them around this sort of area. That I've been a part of has mostly been about then Findlay Basin. So one of the big basins that would be further north on Alice's Road and they had some initial sort of, um. Discussion with Polk County about this, but it has not gone any further than that. Dallas Center, which would be sort of a natural future connection point that has, it has a trail connection that goes through Walkie. Um, some opportunities for potential greenways through there. I don't believe they've had, uh, bigger discussions about when and how. I know Grimes has been looking at it pretty carefully as well because they know their city's coming out, but. It's been a lot of, it's been a lot of awareness raising. That's been a lot of keeping this kind of top of mind for folks. I really credit, uh, John Swanson at Polk County for trying to herd our cat, herd all the cats to keep this top of.
Yeah, I would suggest that we share this presentation with the Dallas County Board of Supervisors. Mike, I care, uh, uh, share your thoughts as well. And I was thinking, where, you know, where's Dallas County on this? This directly benefits them and, and this is a big part of store market management. An issue that we've been talking about, but I think the first part of that is reaching out to them, sharing with what our plans are and. And making sure that they're a partner, uh, as long, along with Walkie and Urbendale and Grimes and anyone else. But I certainly think we need to, uh, to share this in collaboration with Dallas County.
Erica, there's still five supervisors in Dallas County or is it two?
Uh, there's, there's three.
Three.
Go lightly Chapman and Hanson.
I didn't know if they went to five already, but okay.
Yeah, we tried, they tried that, but it, it didn't go.
So Councilman Klein, what I'm hearing in that. We want to chase down Dallas County for some money is that the answer is yes, we want to go this big. And that staff just needs to figure out some options for how, but I want to hear from the rest of the council. Is, is that where we're at? Is the answer yes?
I, I'm not suggesting we change Dallas County downs for money. What I'm suggesting, we offer them a partnership and collaboration with our, our vision of what we're doing right here.
We're all five supervisors.
That's a great recommendation, but Councilman, I will set that up.
Thank you.
Other questions? More to come on this. It's an important conversation. You can see those, some of those key things that are still coming, uh, ahead of us. The focus of the neighborhood engagement is going to really be about the race to getting the trail reestablished. They really want it. It's going to be another summer of disruption, but with some good fortune. Maybe we can get in there a little bit sooner than, uh, and finish this up before summer of twenty twenty five. But also want to be careful about managing expectations.
All right. More water.
This conversation will continue next week.
I mean, WRA is in charge of some of that, right? I mean, it's out of our hands on a piece of that. Was that part of it?
The easements that they have around the sewer. Yeah, there, I mean, there is. There's wording in those easements of what we can and cannot do in those easements, but this, we have, we have flexibility with what we're talking about here.
I think it's worth noting that all of the, all of the mitigation banking pieces have already excised parcels that we can't touch or easements that we can't touch. So even if the WRA does have restrictions on what we're allowed to do in the vicinity, it's not going to affect the banking piece of it.
Thank you.
Matthew, go ahead and share this. So this was in your packet. This is a memo ready for your feedback and improvement. On a water stewardship grant program. So one of the, uh, next steps identified in the Water Resources Master Plan was to come up with it, a set of incentives, grants. Partnerships, others, things that could get more good practices in the ground. Not only public, city ground, but also private, individual homes, businesses, HOAs. And this is a framework for how we can start to get much of that done. Taking dollars that would be generated by the stormwater utility, creating grants. And then putting those dollars, reinvesting those dollars directly back into Clive residents and businesses. So you see, uh, you see the objective there for the program. This is very similar to what we see in neighboring communities here in central Iowa. A good resource to compare us to will be the rain campaign dot com, which is a nice place where a bunch of us, uh, cities who. Participate in ice web and, and have, uh, sort of made, made an agreement to kind of elevate this story. It's where we're putting common information. So no matter what city you live in, you can go there and figure out. How you might be able to pay for some of these best practices in your yard. Currently Clive is not on that sheet because we don't have this stood up yet. Our sort of quality restoration program is highlighted in that area, but we really want to show up in the grant opportunity but column as well. The eligibility for this, at this time, we've perceived to be the people who pay Clive utility bills. Homeowner associations though would also be eligible. I can imagine also, if you're not in HOA, but you're a group of homeowners together that want to do a common practice. Because you have a common feature like a drainage in your backyards, that might be something we could accommodate as well. Commercial industrial properties, if you pay utility, you're, you're able to do it. The practice obviously has to go in, in Clive, at a Clive residence. And frequency, you're limited to once per calendar year. Here's where I could use, uh, some guidance and direction from the council. I want to make sure that the qualifying projects that we represent, and this can change as it grows over time. That these are consistent with the types of practices you all think would be wise investments. Worth noting some of the things that aren't here. We're not talking about buried tile lines. We're not talking about making connections between your sump pump and storm sewer. We're focusing on practices that catch and infiltrate water, decrease the likelihood of some of the negative externalities to come with poorly managed stormwater. The ones, the two on there that we know, we've heard quite a bit about are those stream bank and drainage stabilizations and the pond improvements. These would be grants, we could, should move forward like this, use these grants to help come alongside. Privately owned drainage areas, privately owned ponds to help them make improvements, but not do. At least this will be our recommendation, not do basic maintenance. We're not going to pay the dredge out the pond. That's something that takes, uh, on the pond owner. But if you added a four bay to your pond to separate some of the solids that were pouring into it, some of the pollution, make it easier to control those. That would be an improvement that we would be happy to come alongside and help fund.
One thing I'm not seeing here, maybe, or maybe I'm just misunderstanding it. I'm, I'm not seeing things that would encourage residents to, to reduce their consumption of water, right? Things that would be on the other side of that, so to speak.
Yeah. I don't know, Councilman, if you wanted to interject at that point, because Councilman Douglas does have a recommendation for how we can. Clarify water conservation from stormwater best management practices.
I thought perhaps we should call this stormwater stewardship grants because we might want to. Um, do more on the conservation side down the road and then that would probably be better referred to as water stewardship.
Or water conservation.
Yeah. And, and that's what I was looking at is the title, you know, water stewardship to me that, that's both.
So we can, we can change things up to, uh, clarify that this is about water, stormwater management practices. Unless the council wants to more broadly expand this to talk about water conservation practices as well, which would be. More than what we anticipated in the Water Resources Master Plan, but as all of you have discussed and know from experience. When you start talking about water, you end up talking about all kinds of water things. They are all meshed up together.
So I'm, I'll, I'll just put, I'm, I'm not opposed to trying to do more. I mean, you know, I know that'll probably deplete the funds faster, but it'll also make more impact faster too, I would, I would argue.
Which is what? Like example.
So if you're reducing the amount of irrigation use, for example, right? But we do that through our rate structure, I would hope. Well, I mean, that's going to go to a certain extent, but if you want a green lawn, you know, you can either, you either keep watering it or not and let it go. But that's going to happen whether we offer this or not, right? But there are options out there that you don't have to, you know, you don't have to water three times a day or three times a week or whatever it is.
I'm very concerned about taking this on at this time. Partly because of the number of residents who don't have an irrigation system, who might think they should be eligible for that. I just think there may come a time where we're really having to get very stringent. About getting water reduced and that would be a good time to implement.
I don't think it necessarily only applies to people with irrigation, right? I mean, everybody has to water their lawn on some frequency and if there, if there's options that we can help them get to that produce just overall water consumption. I'd be fine with keeping it this way, with not muddying it up, keeping a kind of a pilot to start. Um, I, I, we can always add to it, right? And if, if we decide that we want to go into conservation as well, then, or, or. I'm not sure exactly how you worded it, but, um, to me, this, this seems more digestible on a, on a, as a starting point. Um, I guess one question I had, and this, this may not be possible, it may be pie in the sky, but. Is, is there a way to be able to calculate? Uh, return on investment or return on reduced costs down the line for us, by us, if we invest two thousand here. So that as an aggregate picture, at the end of the year, we can say, okay, we, we invested twenty grand, but here's how, how much we save. Down the line or something like that.
Right. So. The cost savings realization will be so, so, so many variables, I think, to come up with that number. It would be. It will be difficult for me to sort of confidently say, here's, here's the amount. Here's why I say that. There's so much variability year to year on how much stormwater we're dealing with and messing with. The infrastructure, uh, the, the watershed is continuing to urbanize, meaning water is coming at us differently than it ever has before. And we're seeing weather events like we've never seen before as well. Lot of different moving pieces. What I can say is that these types of practices have been studied rigorously and there is a standard. To which they need to be built, which allows us to define a certain amount of water that is managed better, conveyed more safely. A certain amount of pollution that is decreased, that is managed better than it otherwise would be. Those are the kinds of return on investment calculations that we can get, I think, a closer accurate, or we can get a closer accurate number than just a dollar figure. Now, on our private projects or on our public projects, like when we're talking about building streets. Right now, we're talking about opening up the box a little bit, the toolbox a little bit more. So we don't have to do super big expensive concrete rock chamber practices in the right of way to meet our stormwater regulations. But instead are going to open it up and do soil quality restoration, which as you saw from our conversation earlier tonight, eleven cents a square. as you saw from our conversation earlier tonight, 11 cents a square foot, that's cheap. That's really, really cheap. Now, we want to make sure it's delivering. And Ray and the team are doing a good job making sure we're being accountable and not just doing something that we think is working, but is actually delivering results. But that would be specifically for those public projects. Could I go and quantify for the community that we didn't have to do so many other types of practices because we did this much SQR everywhere? That's a tough one.
Okay. So that's fair. I guess. I just want to have us keep in mind. Maybe we can't get to an exact dollar amount, but there has to be some level of tangible benefit to the city that we, we need to be able to articulate, but we're not just subsidizing just to subsidize, that there's an actual benefit and a tangible benefit that we can point to. So however we come to that, I think we need to keep that in mind as we do this type of a project.
And again, my mind would go first then to what we can say about gallons treated, yielding better water quality, getting down to the creek, gallons infiltrated that otherwise would have gone through other parts of the conveyance system.
I'm sure there's various metrics and different things, but let's just keep that in mind. As we're doing this, that there has to be something at the back end of it.
Yeah.
The benefits.
It's got to be the reason why we're doing it.
Yeah, that we can articulate, right?
It's got to be quantitated.
Yeah.
Right on the side of in it. I think you're right down the track.
Okay. In addition to these grant eligible projects, there are some.
Do you have that question?
Yes, sir. Apology.
Yeah. So before we move on here, you know, again, I'm all for public private partnerships on this and there's, you know, there's, there's real value in, in, you know, incentivizing individuals to participate in these type of projects. I agree with my peers on, you know, some type of a quantification of the results of this investment from, from the city perspective, you know, I hate to just throw money at a project without being able to get some type of quantifiable, you know, return on investment. I know it's difficult. I, I sort of get that. The second point is talking about limiting water and, and, you know, I, I think we are doing that right now. I think we need a slippery slope when we get into some type of government mandated and water usage right there. I don't know we're ready to go down that, that road right yet. You know, we're doing that right now with the tiered waters rates that we just passed. And I think rain barrels are another good way to help folks to utilize and, and use, you know, store their water right there and limit that consumption right there. So I'm, I'm very wary of going down that legislative road at this point when we can still use incentives to, to comp cycle.
Excellent. Be clear, this isn't legislation, right? This is just a grant.
Just a program. So maybe Ray can give you maybe another, the engineer's take on how we might.
If you're talking about limiting people's water, that's ordinances, you know, that's, that is, that's government action right there.
No, I mean, conservation is if, if you want to do it, you can apply for a grant and the city will help you pay. It's not mandated. It's not required that you do, that you do a certain type of grass or anything. It's just saying, if you want to, the city might help you. But I mean, I think we're off topic anyway, because that's not what we're talking about right now, anyway.
Well, we're talking about water stewardship grants and the dimension was before was how do we reduce consumption? There's a lot of ways to do it. I just want to make sure that we're not mandated in that any way, shape or form.
That is outside the scope of what is here on the memo at this time, but sounds like what I was looking at the council, there's some recognition that that might be something in the future, but for now, it looks like the majority of the council wants us to keep this focused on stormwater.
And it was a reason I thought we should probably call it stormwater stewardship, just so it's clear.
Right. So maybe.
I think rain barrels are to come too, right? On your.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I think rain barrels were taken off so that they could be a rebre program.
It's the next.
Okay, cool. Um, so I know Pete loves calling me the engineer, um, so I guess I'll fulfill, make it on that, but I just want to remind you that I'm also human. Um, one way that you could consider quantifying these things, um, it would not count for things like stream bank and drainage stabilization or like items five, six. Items five and six don't have strong like abilities to quantify what has been infiltrated or what has been captured, but items one, two, three, four, um, and to some extent seven can, um, you can quantify how much infiltration you're getting out of those practices, which is what you would do in order to size the practices to begin with. So if I wanted to put a rain garden in my backyard and I wanted to take a quarter of my roof runoff, and that's a known calculation, then we would be able to say, we've removed this many square feet of impervious out of the system. And arguably, if we've paid for that to go into the community somewhere that isn't beholden to Clive post-construction stormwater ordinance things, could we then claim that as credit for particularly for the infiltration practices? The runoff reduction volume that we keep running into as a problem with our streets. So yes, I think it's worth quantifying. Yes, I think the infiltration practices in particular can be quantified. And I think that in order to talk about the value that we're saving for ourselves, we could consider like an in lieu program for the infiltration practices that would offset runoff reduction volumes that we'd need every time we do a street reconstruction. So many of these are quantifiable.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ray. And I do think of engineers as people. The, yeah. Yeah, attorneys too. I think of them as people.
Don't speak in English.
I do. I happen to live with one. I sit next to one up there at the desk too. The, that is a really great point that Ray made though, because all of these practices, if we keep opening up the, the box, we can start to think about ways that they are not just things that benefit the individual properties that we're partnering with, but maybe build up some compliance bank for us in the future. We don't conceive of that with this policy document or this program document at this time, but it's something to keep in mind.
And also Ray brings up a great point because if you look at Harbach.
That's what we're doing.
Right? That you need those extra points.
Yep.
If you look at now, if I was the resident, I'd question if the city should be using my points or not, but as a subject down the line, but.
Right.
Right. But it's a great point of, you know, the bank, those.
Yep.
We just approved it earlier tonight with the SQR program, because a portion of that is a hundred percent cost share. Where the city is investing in SQR in the Harbach neighborhood, and that's getting us some of our compliance for the Harbach road reconstruction. So we're already piloting this concept right now. We can quantify by doing the SQR at 11 cents a square foot versus putting in a rock chamber underneath the street at half a million dollars or whatever that number is, we can start to quantify to your point, Councilmember Weaver, the benefits of doing these programs. Again, if we want to take that next step of having the, this be part of our compliance strategy as a city, citywide, because you can identify subwatersheds where we know we're going to have road reconstruction projects and take that, just like the wetland mitigation bank is a way to buy credits for compliance, we could also potentially set this up for our own internal compliance that you don't necessarily have to go through a regulatory agency like you do a wetland bank.
Well, the last thing I was going to say was with, with that quantification and understanding, you know, with which of these maybe provide greater benefit? We could then have some sort of formula that then determines how much of a credit we provide to, as opposed to just, you know, we'll, we'll do a flat amount up to this amount. We could make that a little bit more beneficial, you know, the more that you're going to benefit the city, the more that we will provide.
Agreed.
And grading of the project.
Yeah.
You get points for it.
And I think that really makes sense as we get to bigger scale, number, larger number of projects, maybe even more expensive projects, but initially here, we're talking about $10,000 annually that would be available. Now, we had $10,000 from the previous year, so we're sitting on 20, 20, 20 right now. Is it 10 on?
It'd be 20,000 in this current fiscal year.
20 in this fiscal, but that was because we didn't spend 10 from the previous. That's how we got to 20 in this fiscal year that we're going into.
It, it, no ramp. We didn't, uh, we did allocate 10 in the previous fiscal year. We just didn't get their grant program off the ground.
Right.
And then it went up to 20 and then I think it goes up to 50 over three years.
Getting to that point.
Getting to 50.
But here's the point on that. The biggest obstacle that we're seeing with all of these programs throughout Iowa and other parts of the country is adoption. And that's why a menu is sort of nice. So that the people can say, well, I never wanted to have to maintain a rain garden, but I don't mind the idea of just some natural turf, you know, some native plants and some turf conversion that I don't have to mow moving forward, and that saves me some time. Keeping the choices in their control a little bit, I think, is going to help us with adoption as we prove our worth with adoption and that we can actually put these dollars into the field. Then I think it makes sense to start calculating what are the most advantageous practices.
No mow February.
Councilman Klein, to your point, you're right. Rain barrels are great. Uh, they don't handle tons of water. You don't have to have much of a rain come down on your house to figure out, wow, that's a lot of water, a lot of runoff, and you'll fill up a barrel real quick. But they're a wonderful way to give people that sort of awareness of what's going on. Most of our neighboring communities, instead of doing a grant specifically for this, just do a simple rebate. Somebody comes in, brings in a receipt, they show us a picture that the gray barrels actually been installed. Boom. Quite a bit simpler than the reimbursement process we're talking about for these grants. So we wanted to make the rain barrel process even just a little bit simpler, so we get more of those in the field. Same way with the SQR, we want to simplify that. We've proven that we can batch these and get good results. We want to continue doing that. And then this fall, we'd like to have our first annual tree sale. And so for trees, barrels, SQR, those would not be necessarily grant eligible, but we would have another way to come alongside folks to get those things done. The only way that maybe some of those could potentially fall into a grant scenario would be through one of these multifaceted projects where somebody's doing a lot of different things at their house. And they say, could I get a grant sort of against all of the costs I have associated with doing this broad rain escaping? And there I can envision a grant being appropriate that might help cover some of the costs for rain barrels, quality, so quad restoration and the tree sale. As I just mentioned, the allocation is a reimbursement after they've come back and gone through all the process of showing us what they want to build. We approve what they want to build. They show us that they've actually done it. We expect it and then we reimburse. If it's a very, very large project and they have some cash flow questions that they need to kind of handle, I can see that we might phase the award, give them part of the grant, another part of the grant, another part of the grant. For those very large projects too, we wanted to design a program so that we weren't just sort of giving them a drop of water when they're trying to manage a, on an ocean sized a project. And so we have written this to give the city the ability to expand the size of an award. We could exceed 2,000, but we really would need to be looking at practices at that point that benefit a large area, are managing lots of stormwater. I can imagine that we need to talk about some of those bigger numbers when we're talking about the ponds, talking about the drainage areas. But, and there could be other practices as well to get very, very large. Uh, my own rain gardens, if you've been past my house now, I'm in year three or four of those. They're looking to my eyes, really beautiful right now. And I got a very large award from the county through USDA dollars, I think it was about $7,000 to go help me cover the cost of constructing those too. So even something that just fits on a single yard can end up being quite expensive. So I think it's understanding that we may need to go above the $2,000 threshold at some point is reasonable. Finally, this is only really another kind of dimension of value created for the city. Recall the signs that we put out in the yards during the SQR program last summer? That's how we ended up building so much interest. And rain of, of water stewardship. Why SQR is kind of interesting and fun. We have a huge waiting list now because of those signs. As we do more and more of these practices, we need their permission, uh, the, and the participation of these grantees in telling the story about why they decided to do this and why other people should decide to do it too. So when you take a grant, you're going to sign up to be part of our publicity and be, and to get recognized.
So Pete, just a small process thing there. When we, when we do that, we should make sure we've got the proper disclaimer and consent mechanism there, especially with the new Iowa privacy law going into effect.
Absolutely.
Real lawyer.
There's the attorney.
Okay. So there, I've got some great points here. My next step will be to incorporate these edits, the name change and, um, work on some of these metrics for measuring success, committing ourselves to measurement as we jump into this. Bring this back then to the council for another look, and then we'll be ready to start making grant awards.
I had one thought, and that is homeowners associations are eligible. Is there any reason that a homeowner within the homeowners association wouldn't be eligible to apply if the HOA already got an award?
If they, I, I can envision that they would be able to. There's I think I would, what I'd like to be in a position to do is say that we're oversubscribed, right? But we're going to have to get there first. So those questions, if we were in an oversubscription type scenario where an HOA said, you know, we're going to do this, but somebody tells, Scott in the HOA says, yeah, but I'm going to go even bigger on my lot. If we were oversubscribed, I might say, give it a year, then apply again. But until we reach that threshold of putting all these dollars out there, I don't think I'd say no at that point. We want these practices in the ground.
What kind of budget are you posing for this project?
So we have $20,000 available in FY24 for grants. The program, as we conceived of it in the Water Resources Utility Cash Flow Rose years after that. But I would recommend that, and this was output of the Water Resources Master Plan too, let's prove demand before we start putting dollars into the program that then just sit and don't get spent. We got to prove demand, prove we can get this stuff moving, and then that would justify a consideration for more funding.
Hopefully like what we've had with the SQR program, we create our own demand in terms of the success we've seen on SQR and have a waiting list for grants. I mean, I think that's we're able to prove the return on investment. We want to see these practices being adopted and all those little points that we can do a little bit more throughout the community.
Excellent.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Council.
You ready to give a report?
Yet again.
I've spoken enough. I haven't got anything to report.
Nothing to report.
Happy days.
Shrikan. Uh, I was out of the country, so I wasn't able to make the DART meeting, but I think Michael is going to give an update on that. So I have no report.
Ed. Okay, a couple of things. Icon, Water Trails met on Tuesday. Richard gave a nice presentation about Greenbelt Landing. Usually we have kind of a one regional project that is presented to the board and, uh, he did a very nice job on presenting Greenbelt Landing. I think everyone was impressed. We had some technical issues that he worked through, um, but, um, but it was, uh, it came off very well. So, so that was, that was really good. The business record is going to be announcing that Icon is, uh, the best thing to happen to central Iowa within the next year. So that's a nice little kudos, little marketing. And we are down to two finalists for the Icon Executive Director. We will be interviewing those two individuals next Friday. I'm not sure if the names are public. I'd be happy to share them with you after this, if, uh, if you'd like to know.
From in-state or?
Uh, yes, both in-state. Uh, we had over 30 candidates, I believe 32 that, that applied. Uh, seven that got to the interview round, and then now we're down to the two finalists. So, um, I think we're, we're looking really good for the executive director there. So, so that's great. So that's Icon and then MPO. Exact Matt, um, we did bring Dylan Mullenix up to where he should be from a salary perspective for the interim director to get him online where he should be. We did go into closed session to discuss that executive director search. And, um, that is, um, was done in closed session. So again, after this meeting, I'll be happy to update you on the specifics of that if you would like. But, uh, so let's just say that process is stalled at the moment. So.
Good.
Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry I came here tonight. I'm in Denver. Tonight is windy all week, but the Junior Olympics just finished up here in Duane. Uh, very successful, uh, uh, great reviews for the Junior Olympics from Kesh to Duane. Uh, and, uh, that's, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
And where were most of the events held, Eric?
Uh, at Drake. The Drake facility.
Okay.
We skipped over that detail.
Big kudos to Drake for a job well done.
Well, I can't say Shrikan was here for the Clive Economic Vitality Committee meeting. So thanks for attending that. We do have some recommendations that have come forward from the, um, committee, and we'll have a chance to talk about some of those in strategic planning.
Good.
Michael.
Yes, Matt and I sat in on the DART presentation, um, or the meeting. There was no vote, but they, uh, did push heavy on some head nods. There's looking at phasing this next project, that 100 and whatever it is, 90,000, million dollar project. There's looking at phasing this next project, that 100 and whatever it is, 90,000 million dollar project from now or wherever it is. But phasing it in three started at 65 million. There was a consensus to go ahead and build Phase 1, which is the maintenance shop. I guess the only opposition I gave was they want to build it to 90% or 90%. They'll build the maintenance shop at 100%, but it'll only take care of 90% of the problem. So they'll utilize both facilities indefinitely until the rest. So to me, the savings isn't there as they pitched, but they were pretty hell bent in getting that piece going. So there was no stopping it, just kind of negotiating was the best case. The money is there, no levy change for Phase 1 and 2. And then they're looking at federal money, right? I think it's the same, if they can build part of it, it will help pry some money out of the feds and or us regionally to build the rest. Yeah, risky strategy. So that's where they're headed with that. It was a kind of a, well, it was a unanimous, I think, around that table.
Yeah, and they have, the Phase 1 is part of the way to use the grant that they've already secured. They have to start showing progress on that grant to keep it. They did get an extension through whatever the agency was, I can't remember, but.
FTA.
Yeah, it's still, it's still predicated on use, like there's got to be progress.
Yeah, and they're going to use it all by buying that property from Des Moines, not all of it, but by buying the property will be that.
Part of Phase 1.
Phase 1, so it shows forward momentum. Yeah, they're going to buy all of the property that will then let them phase into it in full scale. And I think we just pushed that they start negotiating with the city of Des Moines. You have lawyers involved, so it'll take a long time. And start getting that purchase. I'd take engineers before I take. I'm not sure lawyers are human. So it's a good plan. So they start negotiating the the purchase agreement with the city of Des Moines before the next meeting. And then I think they're going to put it in front of the DART Board officially next meeting to do that.
And I'll be sharing the DART staff shared with us, the presentation, a little white paper on the phasing, the details, I'll be sharing that with you all. I may update tomorrow so you can see. But I agree with Michael. I think it's, in terms of getting something started, the the FTA grants are not going to go to the existing facility, not with the location it is and the status that it is in right behind a flood levy. So there, if there's going to be any chance of having federal funding for this project, it has to be in a new location. And I think they're at least on a on a good track. It's similar to what, you know, the airport's considering of phasing the terminal project of getting those started with those federal agencies, and then the federal agencies are a lot more likely to fund the future phases or at least provide grant opportunities for future phases once you're in the ground. I think that's a similar strategy. I think Phase 2 gets them a large portion of what they need. And that they've laid out a strategy, again, relying upon grant funding that wouldn't impact the levies, that wouldn't require that debt service component to get to Phase 2. So I think if you, if you're at Phase 1 and Phase 2, you're a large chunk of the way there. And then I think there's going to be some board discussion about, do you go further than that at some point? I think it was fair to say.
Phase 3 is basically a bus barn. Make sure all the buses are inside, so they can do without that. But my only worry was having two facilities running. Their whole argument was to get out of the old facility. And now they're okay with staying at the old facility and using the new facility indefinitely until they find out if they can get federal money. So something to watch, to concern.
Phase 2 gets them out of the old facility completely. Phase 1 does not.
Correct. That is. Oh, Mayor can speak of the partnership.
Okay, thank you. Nothing. Matt?
All I have, Your Honor, is obviously we have the strategic planning workshops starting next week on Tuesday. We'll have the materials ready for you. I will be tomorrow sharing with you a few strategic issue memos like I've done in previous years that I would like you to take a look at, that will really start framing the conversations that we'll be having on Tuesday night related to kind of financial strategy, staffing, community resiliency, where like the pond discussion is a piece of that, streets, things like that. So I'll be sharing with that with you tomorrow to give you some pre-reading before we get in with Lyle on Tuesday. That's all I have, Your Honor. That's just questions.
Do you want to just mention briefly the partnership meeting?
Yeah, happy to. We met with the partnership and the new CEO Tiffany Taushak today. She's doing some kind of a listening tour, listening sessions throughout the community with a variety of stakeholders that are investors in the partnership. And had a really great conversation with them about governmental affairs strategies, economic development strategies related to office development and the potential of what might happen with tax program financing going forward. So I think we had a good conversation and they were very much listening to what we had to say about things that where we see the partnership could potentially position themselves in the future, particularly as a facilitator in a number of roles. Talked about climate change impacts and how that's affecting our region and how business, community and government partners can work together more on that. So good conversation.
Matthew, do we have any correspondence?
We do not have anything further.
Do we have anyone or anything that will keep us any further? Being none. Oh, yes, I'm ignoring your hand.
Hey, Michael, as long as you pay our billable rates, you can count lawyers as non-attorneys.
We're going to adjourn 9:16. Thank you.